Good evening and welcome to the April 22nd, 2024 City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So thank you for joining us this evening. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Cotton.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Ross.
I am here. Thank you, City Clerk Dean. So we now move to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda. And this is just the roundtable agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second and Councilmember Christensen. Is there any discussion? Seeing them? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, aye? So the agenda is approved. So this evening's special business is the Comprehensive Plan Economic Development Element. We started the review of the draft element during the April 8th Roundtable and we will continue. I believe we're starting at item 1B. And we have Community Development Director Emily Artetja, who has helped take the review process.
Good evening. Good evening, councilmembers. Can you hear me? Last time my mic wasn't picking up, so. Better? Alright, we're just gonna run through a brief overview. So without further ado, we will go over the schedule and process. Again, we will go into an overview of policy summary and then into review and discussion. You've seen this chart before, community engagement, the planning commission meetings, council committee meetings. And these roundtables are feeding into the goals and policies. Behind the scenes, we're doing technical review and analysis. We have agency review and then out comes the final draft Comprehensive Plan. Yay. We are making extraordinary headway on getting through these elements. We just have two more to go. We're past the hump on the downhill. After one more council roundtable meeting, we will be complete with your work. So here we are today with economic development and then environment for next week, or first week, first meeting in May. This is a recap of the Economic Development Policy Review Summary. I have highlighted in green a few areas that stood out with the development of these draft goals and policies. We've already gotten into some discussion. You can see that the downtown restaurant anchor, other retail that's Snoqualmie-based, wayfinding signs were all top priorities during the development of this element. Let me give you just a preview what we're going to be doing within the environmental element. Same chart. Here you can see that best available science, not just weed control, and use of FEMA guidelines were all top considerations. I know we probably won't get into it today, but if we do, then at least you have this overview. Alright, next steps, I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing this and start sharing where we left off from last time. Just one moment, please. Okay. Mayor Ross has already indicated where we left off. That was, I believe, 1A. We stopped.
Right, 1B.
1B, yeah. And so we are just, I'm just gonna read off the letters, hopefully not too fast. If you need, we go slower, just let me know. Let's start with B. C. D. E. F. G. H. And I.
Can we go back to G?
Sure. G.
So that's a consolidation. That's a consolidation versus diversification statement. So why is focus on existing businesses? Or existing, what do you call them, industries or whatever you want to do? Existing market segments we already have versus focusing on bringing new market segments, new things into the city? Or there's a third option of why focus on either one of those? It's just, let's focus on bringing businesses in, whether they add to the existing business we have or whether it's a new market segment. I'm six, wanna have dozen the other. Why is the statement in here of let's add to what we already have?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
There was, there was.
Missing.
There, there, I don't, I don't think you're missing anything. There was just a concentration of why not lean into what, what we know people will need if they're going to be in this environment. You know, what kind of outdoor equipment would they need? What kind of ice sports, you know, equipment would they need? Could they easily get it here if they're coming to here to use these facilities to enjoy the outdoor recreation? That, that, that is the sentiment about this policy. Could be changed, though.
Councilmember Cotton.
So it could be more you're gearing towards support industries of the existing businesses.
Yeah. Yeah, we talked about this last time we met, too. The ice arena, maybe it's the swimming suit that for the pool that's coming or whatever. I mean, how far do you have to go to get, you know, a walking stick if you're gonna be hiking?
Councilwoman.
The word complementary businesses come to mind. So businesses complementing existing businesses rather than competing.
And I would put it as complementary. Sorry. I would put it as complementary and new market segments. I'm not sure, and I'm not gonna pick on, there are certain market segments where we have it off.
I think C addresses new market segments, potentially.
Would you, would you swap out specific with identify complementary industries? Or did you have a revision?
Councilmember Cotton.
I think Councilmember Holloway had mentioned complementary and new businesses that based on the sectors that were, that were already well represented in.
Could you read that out loud how you want it rephrased, please?
I guess it would be identify specific or identify complementary and new industries to recruit to Snoqualmie based on sectors that are already well represented in the city. I don't know that we need to go into the detail of which ones are here.
That may change over time.
Alright, that's a good idea. Councilwoman.
And I'm just looking at E and H. They're almost the same thing because what we've got is a highly skilled workforce that lives here, that works elsewhere. And the better match would be to find those industries where we have a natural workforce base already and try to recruit them in. I'm thinking high tech. And then the other, the second piece to that would be to help foster remote workspace because people are commuting in. Can they, if, if we had more appropriate that's outside of their residence workspace here in the valley, they'll work here, they'll have their lunches here, they'll spend more money here and they'll spend less money on gas and carbon monoxide.
Does that be?
Might be.
I'm gonna buy my carbon monoxide.
No.
So you're saying combine E and H?
Yeah, combining E and H and maybe some, you know, part of that is, is enhancement of flexible workspace development to lessen commutes. I don't know, something like that. Somebody else with a vision.
Are you talking about like the loft workspace that they have in Snoqualmie on Gilman?
Could be.
I don't think that helps us. Totally gonna help Snoqualmie.
No, 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 not the loft, but.
Something like.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
Offering, offering flexible workspace for people to use for whatever timeframe they need.
And does everyone concur to combine E and H? See, that's a head nod.
Does anybody have a combo draft policy they'd like to read off just so we can, even if it's needs to be finessed a little bit?
Yeah, Rob's got it.
Well, you can work on language.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Alright, number two. The city fosters a business climate that facilitates economic development through expedient and equitable regulations, permit review processes, and enforcement actions while effectively preserving and protecting the area's environmental and cultural resources.
Councilwoman.
I'm just thinking, can we, can we like condense that opening statement and I'd like to remove enforcement actions because it is kind of a negative connotation. But just to X, to, to review current processes and increase efficiencies or something like that, I don't. I may be the only one.
Is there concurrence?
Well, I would.
Councilperson. Well, I think, because for one, or cotton.
I do think that if rewording and enforcement actions, as Councilmember Watten suggested, if just that wordage would deter any businesses from coming here, I think it's worth maybe softening it a little bit.
So don't remove code, I don't remove enforcement actions, but reword it to something else.
Something softer and gentler.
Councilperson.
I, I don't think that we necessarily need to take it off because as it's written, it kind of goes through the, the different levers that the city has in terms of working on both the economic development and preserving and protecting. I don't, I don't know that it would, that the language in here would prevent a business from coming. We're gonna want enforcement actions where they're needed to address, you know, making sure that, that the city is being run properly and that there aren't problem properties, things like that. So I'd, I'd be a little bit hesitant to take it out because it does just kind of go through and identify the different levers that the city has.
Councilwoman.
It, although, I, to me, it seems that that, part of that is covered under the expedient and equitable regulations. If the regulations are good, that should state what the enforcement actions are in. I would think.
We'll see.
Councilperson.
So my, my reading of it, right, you have the, you have the initial regulations and you have the review processes and then to the extent that someone is not complying with the regulations that are in place, that's where you end with the enforcement actions. It's basically to ensure compliance with the rules that are being set by the city.
Compliance is the softer terminology. Code compliance is what is kind of the new upgraded terminology, stuff like that.
Yeah. Council Johnson.
I think I'm fine with the compliance. Still gets across the same thing and maybe softer. Objection.
Fine with code compliance instead of enforcement actions.
Did we, was there anything else there that needed to be addressed as far as processes and increasing efficiencies? Nope, okay. A. C.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman.
So C, how about if we change it from explore to pursue partnerships? And I'm not sure that we need to list out the specific partnerships. And
what else there may be?
Pursue partnerships. Explore, no, pursue economic development partnerships. That includes that respects.
Now I'm having a hard time.
No, no, I think you're, I think you're.
Diversity and inclusion. I don't know, do we want to lose this list of crimes against humanity that we have? This is the darkest.
Council Johnson.
Yeah, to Councilmember Benson's aside there, it is quite a list of, of, of things that of issues that we're facing, but it is also not exhaustive. So in a way, by listing them out, but not listing others, things like women's rights, for example, and inequality in the workplace, equity of pay, that sort of thing. I don't see that listed there, but that's a significant problem, too. It's almost like, do we list out a whole bunch of them and the list could go on ad nauseam and perhaps it should? Or is there some other term that we could refer to such as equity in its place? Or is this language this?
It's coming from PSRC.
Okay, and if we're supposed to say that, that's what we're supposed to say.
But it's not, it's not regulation, it's guidance. So again, this is an optional element, not a required element. And these are considered best management practices when it comes to fostering economic development. So I think the goal here is to promote economic development opportunities, you know, within these areas that are sometimes obstacles.
Council Johnson.
Can we say to promote business opportunities equitably? And is that enough to cover it? Because otherwise, I do feel like I want to list more things that are obstacles.
My god.
These were the primary obstacles from a regional level. So they were, they were handpicked. They, they didn't go into any other exhaustive list.
Councilwoman.
I think I agree with Councilmember Johnson that we have to either name them all or put it as a group calling of these things that come to mind. And, and I think it's impossible to name them all.
Councilperson.
I just have a question in terms of, since this is a document that we're using to help direct staff and how to proceed. Is it more helpful for staff to have a larger list to work with or a smaller list knowing that these constitute some of the things that we're looking for?
Again, these are policies, not regulations. So from here, we would, you know, use this to build programs that would help small businesses and, you know, the Business Connector, for example, is offering language services. They're helping address racism. You know, the, these partnerships are deploying programs that the city could partner with or participate in to help a variety of small businesses thrive that are, that have faced challenges in these areas.
So.
City Administrator.
To specifically respond to your question, with the size of our organization, it's always better if you focus our attention because we don't have, you know, a bench with nine players on it that we can send nine different ways. But with that said, obviously, there's a lot of work here, so. And they're looking for certain, certain words. So I, I know that's zero help.
But it does say explore partnerships. That's all it says, just explore partnerships. Hey, city, explore some partnerships that may be able to help you in these challenging areas that affect small business owners.
Your pro Tim Holloway.
So how about explorer partnerships with community and external organizations to address barriers and disparities faced by small businesses to promote economic development opportunities.
Second.
Did you get that all written down?
It's recorded.
I'll use the recording for that.
Okay.
As long as we're live and recording. Yay.
Councilwoman.
Or if, if it helps staff, as was mentioned, with saying that equity and, you know.
DE and I.
Yeah, that, and then you could put in parentheses such as racism. You know, those kinds of things, for example, or, or, you know, that where it's not a complete list.
Would you like me to add the four examples in there?
I might cover it, though, DE and I probably cover those. Councilperson.
Personally, I'd like to strike it completely, replace it with treat people and businesses equitably. I've never, I've never known any organization like the ones listed that solved the problem. They, they sure find a lot more of it and, but it just, it's an industry that just explodes and balloons and it finds smaller and smaller examples so that they can spend, spend more and more money on solving, on supposedly solving problems while really just exacerbating them. I think that as a city, we are not gigantic, we're 15,000 people. And I, I think that if we have a goal as a city to treat people equitably and treat businesses fairly, that's great, that's great. I'm we're fortunate being in a city this size that we can approach things in that manner. I, I don't like, I don't like this one at all. That's how I'd fix it.
Council Johnson.
Yeah, I, I think that I like best of the options I've been offered so far, Councilmember Holloway's proposal with the inclusion of the DE and I that Councilmember Cotton included as well. I just think that, 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 that covers the list and even just giving these as examples, there are some here that I, I would just honestly have to feel like, to feel like I was representing our entire community. There are other things I wanted to put on the list and not leave off. So it's better, in my opinion, to just not have the list. Just a DE and I and whatever Councilmember Holloway said.
Okay. So we'll go back and listen to it.
That was the, I believe we, we made it through DE and I already. Didn't go back?
I don't think we did.
No, no, we didn't do a go back on this one. We, we high ended on C.
Alright, D.
E, Council Johnson.
But just, I don't know, this is just a weird way that it's phrased. Strive to provide opportunities for business owners to share challenges. Meaning like share information about challenges, not to spread the challenges from one to another. It's just an awkward phrasing.
It is, it is information, yeah. I think they were trying to use less words, but yeah, they, they want a way to express themselves, like what's not working.
How about to express that, express instead of share?
Express challenges.
Okay, share information about challenges and opportunities.
Share information.
Sure. Sure.
They're sharing challenges.
E.
Councilwoman.
So I'm, I'm reading E really is talking about transparency. So have accurate and timely information on permit applications. It's really about having greater transparency on permit applications, isn't it?
It, 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 this particular policy developed out of a series of meetings with the Downtown Business Association. Where are the forms? How do I access them? You know, you know, can you share information about that? Can you update the website? Could we get a page that dealt with economic development that spoke to new incoming businesses or even existing businesses?
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
So the, the last part, we're actually not telling them about their business operations. We're process relating to, it could be city operations or business interactions with the city. We're not getting into the operations of individual businesses, so that I business interactions with the city might be a better one in that one. It's, yeah, we're not getting into their business. We're trying to provide them more information of how they interact with us.
Do you have a rephrase?
Business, business engagements with the city.
Instead of operations.
Instead of operations. Because business operations is theirs.
Ensure business owners have accurate and timely information on permit applications and other review processes related to business engagement with the city.
Business engagement with the city.
Council Johnson.
That wasn't my reading of the intent, but perhaps I have it wrong. The way that I was reading that was another review process related to business operations as in code enforcement. Like if they have some business practice that they're doing that is in violation of a city code and they don't know that, it'd be good for them to know and for us to also enforce as needed. That's how I read it, rather than that we're supposed to be running their business for them. We're getting involved in how they're running their business apart from making sure they follow the code. That's how I read it.
Right, I think that's what you just said, Director Artetja, that was in a place where everyone could go and find the information regarding something that might impact their business. So you talked about permits. You talked about zoning, all kinds of things.
We've, we've discussed internally with the department and, and community business owners about a, a one-stop shopping place where they could go like a community economic development webpage. Here's where you need to go if you're opening up your business. A friendly, helpful webpage with contact information and links.
So businesses licenses, BNO tax. So businesses licenses, BNO tax, all kinds of stuff. Councilor Johnson.
So then I, I do agree with Councilmember Holloway's concern about it makes it sound like we're going to get in, into their business, so to speak. So I wonder if there's maybe a couple of extra words that, that are needed there to relate it to the code, following BNO tax, et cetera. Maybe it's, it's a short list of the kinds of things that the city does get involved in.
Yeah, that could be related to operating a business. Councilor Christensen.
I was just going to take a stab at trying to rewrite it, but I kind of lost it. You could say, and other city review processes related to, no, nevermind. I take it back.
City Minister.
How about delete the last four words and put upon request?
And put what?
Upon request.
How about just delete the last four words?
Your President Holloway.
How about just delete the last four words?
Yeah. All right. I. Where's F? Oh, it's F, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Eye on here. So there's.
Yeah, it is I.
FGH.
We jumped to L.
Or L or I, I don't know. The one that comes after E.
That's been a long day.
I had to go through the alphabet in my mind.
The next one's G.
It's a new diversity alphabet. It's all gone.
And I will, I will go back and double check to make sure we're not missing something here. I'm not sure why it formatted like this.
Okay, but we're on G now. We're on the new G.
I think the G was good. It was just preceded by an L.
H.
So what can we?
Your President Holloway.
Help me understand G. Are we gonna do, we're gonna discuss point of sale systems with new businesses? And why are we getting in to the discussions of how they do their business? If, if they're not doing it effectively, the market will correct.
Again, these are best management practices coming from PSRC and they've made, they've put a lot of time into that reference in your packet about emerging, evolving technologies that keep businesses competitive and innovative, efficient, creates job opportunities.
Councilor Johnson.
I wonder if instead of encouraging local businesses to utilize, can we say encourage local businesses to, you know, be aware of these different emerging things so they could make an informed decision as a business owner? Instead of telling them, hey, you should really start doing online shopping. It's like, no, we don't want to deal with that. There's, there's extra headaches doing online shopping. I don't want to do that. Okay, cool. That's, that's your business. But they should be aware.
Councilor One, One and then Cotton.
My, my concern is our responsibility ends at somewhere like entering their building. So it's like broadband service to their building. That's really all that we have. Making sure the water flows, the electricity flows, the communications flows, the broadband service flows. That's about where it ends. In my opinion, but it just seems like it's a little far reaching.
You know, there's like the Suomi Valley Chamber app where you can actually, where there's, anyway, the Valley app, you go out and look at, you know, for restaurants and stores and things like that. So that, you know, we would encourage them to be part of that. They so choose. Councilor Cotton.
That, that was kind of along the lines of what I was going to suggest with wording it with providing opportunities for the local businesses to be exposed to these types of things. And I don't know if the city does, like some of the community groups, the community business groups do like, you know, luncheons or lunch and learn or, you know, something like that where, you know, we can, you know, get some of these technologies in to, for the.
This particular policy was geared at recruitment, you know, making sure we get businesses in that are dynamic with use of.
More recruiting the business.
Yeah, like we haven't really done any recruiting here as far as I know, on, you know, targeted recruiting.
But I think that the chamber, for instance, had a luncheon. They had somebody come in and talked about AI and how AI is going to impact businesses. So that would be, you know, one way of sharing information with them and then it's up to their choice of what the, how they want to use it. Councilor Johnson.
But I, I think it was in the way I was saying earlier, instead of saying utilize, which is telling them you need to do this. That's how I read that. It's just saying they, they should be informed and wording it as such.
Right.
Perhaps we can help foster the environment where they can share those ideas. And if they don't want to, that's their business.
I think you said be aware.
Yeah.
Encourage local businesses to be aware of evolving technologies.
Something like that.
Okay, H. All right, the next one is a new goal. The city advances its economic development goals and maintains its competitiveness through land use regulations, long range and strategic planning and capital investments.
Councilor Washington.
Yeah, I think long range and strategic pretty similar. Right? So I don't know, I'd probably just take up long range strategically.
Right, A. B. C.
Councilor Cotton.
On C, where would this Meadowbrook Retail District potential Meadowbrook Retail District be down by the intersection?
It needs to go through the EDC and evolve from the bottom back up to the council for review.
Okay.
It's a code amendment implementation.
It seems like there's two potential areas, right? We have the Milk Barn area. Then you have over near where Seagallows makes their wine. That's a whole.
Yeah.
You say Meadowbrook and Park right there.
Yeah, yeah. I believe this one was geared toward the, the original Meadowbrook, city of Meadowbrook. Yeah. So aligned with, you know, the River Trail and then they encounter the new district.
Okay. Took the houses out of there and, okay.
D.
Sorry, Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Johnson.
Pardon me, actually, Congress wants to spell that out a little bit more because when I first read this in my mind, I foolishly was thinking that we were thinking, okay, well, right in the middle of, you know, where the elk go passing through, the word is going to put a big retail center in the middle of it.
They have nowhere to get coffee.
Right. So just to clarify for our citizens, I, I, I think if we're talking about the intersection where there's all the buildings in Meadowbrook, it's kind of the historic district area that, that we actually call out that intersection. I don't see any reason not to. If that's what we're talking about.
Historic Meadowbrook District.
Yeah. So it's just more clear. So no one thinks that we're talking about digging up the field.
Councilperson.
Are you, are you talking about the Milk Barn area or down, further down on the other side of the high school?
Yeah, down by the bridge.
The brick, the brick buildings.
Right, yeah, all right. Where Alpine Coachworks is and all.
Well, and I'm, one, ANC somewhat contradicts each other in my head. So, but I, I, and I'm not sure, you know, long range is Meadowbrook. It may be considered promoting development in under, I'm sorry, repeating, but underdeveloped areas, which may include Meadowbrook, which may include the Milk Barn area. There's some stuff there which may include the Business Park S21. So I, I, I'm just, the, the laser focus on Meadowbrook when, on this one versus the one up above says we're going to do it equitably across the community. Again, in my head somewhat contradicts. But I, I'm just going to say it. I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to propose a change or anything else.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, an excellent point. And I think that perhaps, yeah, rewording it essentially has Mayor Protem said, consider creating retail districts or enhancing retail districts such as, and then list off potential areas. But we're not saying brand new this, at this exact spot. This is where we're doing it. But listing it off as one of several possible locations.
Again.
That sounds more equitable.
Yeah, this one was specific to that area because of River Trail and that there would be a terminus and a destination point for them.
But there was the, the alternative spot that was mentioned of the Milk Barn. Somebody mentioned it.
Oh, I just threw it out there.
Okay, but that's another spot that perhaps could have more development in that way. We're not so laser focused and potentially contradicting Part A saying, so we want to do it everywhere, especially here, right? It's, here's some, some other.
I think there's, there was also discussion at the various commission level about extending the retail district along Railroad Avenue. So we could see more of a continuous retail storefront to close in the gaps there.
Right. Councilperson Benson.
Yeah, maybe, maybe something that's more, if, if it does list one or two places also include something like end sites not yet considered. You know, so, so that we can just say, you know, we're actively searching for places where this could be done.
Okay, D.
E. Councilor Washington.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm probably just not reading it correctly, but I'm kind of struggling with the first sentence here. So attract businesses with the potential to create a high number of jobs. I would think maybe a high number of quality jobs and offer commercial spaces of varying sides, varying sizes to accommodate. So do we want the businesses to offer the commercial areas and we should maybe change into that? That offer commercial spaces. I don't know, just kind of, you know, my colleagues here, but I don't know, maybe it should be broken up into two different points. I don't know, maybe I'm not reading it correctly. But I would like to add a high number of quality jobs, I think for starters.
Quality.
So I have the word quality. See, Mayor Precum Holloway and then Councilor Johnson.
So, um, so I have a, I guess I have an issue because it goes from the singular to the plural in that it's not necessarily attracting business. You're attracting developments with a potential to create high number of jobs off commercial spaces. Yeah, the development is a business, but it's different than a restaurant or nail or whatever. We're really looking things like what we did in Sequel and the mill site. So I, I would propose taking that first businesses out and put attract developments with a potential to create.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I would stress the quality over the number. And also, I, I think that that actually is a better solution than what I was going to suggest of that we already have the mention of attracting businesses that will foster high quality jobs and stuff. We, we have that for the rep under number one. But talking about the development, I think addresses that and does get to the fact that it's a different issue than the businesses themselves. If we could attract all the businesses in the world, but if there's no space, they can't come. I agree, changing businesses to.
Councilperson Benson.
I, enough for nothing. What's the opposite of quality jobs? Is it low quality jobs? And what is the, what is the need for low quality jobs? We, we do have, I, you know, the, the highest number of kids of any community in the county. And I'm, I, low quality jobs are important, you know, especially if you have a, a teen population that you want to keep occupied and, and making forward progress. And I don't know that it's necessary that all of the jobs be careers. You know, you, you need to build up to that, especially when you have more kids than anybody else in the county.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I think that's actually a really good point. And that's, I'm not sure exactly what, upon reflection, what a high quality job is anyway. I mean, if, if I want to pick up garbage, then cool, that's my high quality job.
I want to know who that guy is because that guy is like a city hero. Love that guy.
How about saying, offering a, a variety of jobs? As a kind of covering all avenues of that.
Second.
Okay, so we talked about, so attracting development with potential to create high number of variety of jobs. And I guess we're getting rid of the word offer. Actually, I circled that.
Take out, delete offer.
I think we're offering it.
Yeah.
Commercial spaces of varying sizes.
Okay, F. Gee.
Yeah, remove the carriage to return.
Carriage return. You need to do this on the diaphragm.
It looks like there might've been some formatting changes when this was PDF. So apologies for that. I.
I think we skipped H.
Yeah.
Okay, H.
And where did L go?
It was up above.
I am sorry. I am sorry, I was just.
You're on J. Oh, Councillor Benson.
I like H. I think H is a neat idea.
About I. J. K.
Now, if you want me to read it though.
Mayor Proton Holloway.
Just, if you want me to read it, you got to keep it steady. If you move it back and forth, I lose my place.
We're still on J.
I know, but it was.
So a lot of carriage returns here.
Councillor Johnson.
Is the entire, uh, potential annexation area, um, designated as planned business park or is it only part of it?
Only part of it. Only the part that about, abuts up against Douglas. K.
Councillor Cotton.
Did we ever find out the problem with our plug-in downtown here over by Valley Record? So that we can, any ministry?
Uh, it was reported to Parks and Public Works. I'm sure they're working to get it serviced.
Before we put more in.
And, and we did reach out to the person, something email and apologized and also sent them a map of the other locations in the city where they are.
Cool.
Okay, let's see if we can get through.
Councillor Johnson.
I just want to just mention something on H that, um, that there are certain land uses that could be, uh, better used as public gathering spaces. So, I'm hopeful that maybe a community development or, or something in the future, we could start looking at that pretty seriously.
Councillor Benson.
I'm excited about H.
Should we, should we add a clause to that or some, some continuation of that to, uh, identify the best potential spaces?
We could do that in, uh, commission level, like EDC level with some maybe feedback from CD or Parks and Parks, uh, Commission. Okay, the city promotes desired economic development while sustaining the natural and built features that gives Snoqualmie its unique sense of place that residents most value.
So we have about one minute left. We'll finish this statement and then adjourn.
We do A.
If there's no changes on this one.
A. B.
Councillor Cotton.
Um, sorry, going back to A, can we, I don't know how the rest of you feel. Can we designate the historic Meadowbrook or are we just kind of calling it all where there's any potential for development?
Councillor Benson.
I wonder if this might be a good place to adjourn just because it's a natural break with number four. Um, pick up at number four next time because I'd hate to get into like a, a deep conversation that we got to cut off in 90 seconds.
Right. Councillor Johnson.
I agree. Also, I agree with Councilmember Cotton that if we just use the word Meadowbrook alone, I don't know that everyone knows that's referring to, including myself, because it could mean several different things. So let's just think about that word as we await our next gathering.
On the note, I would just really encourage you to read ahead if, if you can, you've, you have this material. If you know, you, you see something that needs to be changed, you can flag it on somehow you could flag it either electronically or in your hard copy pack of material. I don't have another roundtable scheduled for you, but if, if we don't finish at our next roundtable in May, then I will schedule another one.
So we could, we could update this with the red lines and there's just, you know, just this one section left. So we could do this during council meeting next time so we can get to the other, other one.
Environment.
Seen that. Yeah, so that's a head nuts. That would use the time.
Council meeting in May.
Yeah, so finish.
Instead of, um, the roundtable.
Right, because we'll go on to the next, the environment of the next May 13th. So.
Thank you.
Great motion to adjourn.
Great job.
So moved.
So moved by Councillor Watson, second by Councillor Johnson. All in favor, CI?
I, I.
Any opposed name? We are adjourned. Now, seven. Time is now seven o'clock and we just completed a roundtable. So council, please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance and Councillor Watson, would you please lead it?
Good job.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the holy light for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we do the first item of regular business and that is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Mayor Proton Holloway, second by Councillor Washington. Is there, council, any discussion? Same Mayor Proton Holloway and then Councillor Washington.
Okay, a couple of changes. One, um, just to let some people get out of here early, I like to swap the order of presentations and proclamations. And additionally, would like to move Agenda Bill 24048, Stormwater Urban Forestry Annual Report, to the end or to the beginning of presentations, so that we can have the Arbor Day proclamation and immediately go in and see what we've done in regards to trees. Yeah, before I go further, can we have a second on that and discussion?
So it's moved by Mayor Proton Holloway, second by Councillor Johnson to move proclamations to ahead of presentations. And then also to move the urban forestry annual report presentation following is the first of the presentations. Any discussion on that? Seeing then, all in favor of that, say I.
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 Any opposed name? So that motion passes. Councillor Washington.
Yes, I, um, I would like, I have a motion to move Agenda Bill 24 dash zero four nine, the comprehensive plan capital facilities and utilities elements underneath the Parks and Public Works Committee. Because I think it is a Parks and Public Works Committee Agenda Bill as opposed to having it underneath the, uh, Community Development Committee.
Councillor Washington, second by Councillor Johnson to move comprehensive plan capital facilities under Parks and Public Works Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, say I. Any opposed name? So we are, the motion passes and Mayor Proton Holloway.
Uh, and then so, uh, happens, our circumstances of the past, I would like to suspend online public comments this week also. We will have a discussion later on in the meeting of how to proceed forward with that. But until we come to conclusion on that, again, would like to suspend online public comments. Emails are always available for submission of, comments to staff and to council. May I have a second?
Moved by Mayor Proton Holloway, second by Councillor Cotton. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, CI?
I.
I.
And moving on to any other changes? Moving on to the approval of the overall agenda with the changes approved. Um, any discussion on, on the overall agenda? Seeing none, all is in favor, CI? Any opposed name? And the agenda is passed as proposed. Right. So moving on to, first of all, first proclamation is volunteer appreciation day proclamation. So National Volunteer Week has been celebrated each year in the third week in April since 1974. It is estimated that volunteers have reduced over 5,000 hours towards programs, certain services benefiting the Snoqualmie community. Snoqualmie has recognized its volunteers for over a decade and will be hosting an appreciation event on April 24th, 2024. So whereas the city of Snoqualmie drives much of its vitality and charm and livability from the residents who live, work and recreate here. And whereas the city of Snoqualmie encourages and supports and facilitates volunteer participation in the delivery of city services. And whereas city volunteers represent a diverse cross-section of our community, working together to increase the quality of life within our community. And whereas volunteers have contributed hours in listening, planning, analyzing, and making decisions that benefit all residents. And whereas it is fitting that a special time to be set aside to honor and recognize the contributions of our volunteers who give so generously to our community. Now therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 24th, 2024, as Volunteer Appreciation Day. So, and hopefully council, you'll be able to attend our volunteer appreciation recognition that evening. Next we have Arbor Day proclamation. So this year marks the 151st anniversary of National Arbor Day. Snoqualmie was recently honored as a sterling community under the Tree City USA program for having received 10 years of growth awards. This demonstrates the city's significant commitment to urban forestry. The city will be hosting an Arbor Day event on Saturday, um, from 10 AM to 2 PM at the community park. So the proclamation, um, whereas Arbor Day was first observed over 150 years ago with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska in 1872. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing topsoil erosion by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas the city Snoqualmie promotes the planting of trees on public and private lands, reforestation of open spaces and other tree protection enhancements that helps sustain the natural character of the Snoqualmie landscape. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas the presence of trees in our city directly improves human health and well-being. Now therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day. So we do have, um, a guest this evening, Julia Cast from Evergreen Communities Coordinator for the Washington State Department of Natural Resources Urban and Community Forestry Program. Yes, please.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Okay, I was trying to make it five minutes. I'm going to do my best. Here we go. Uh, my name is Julia Cast, the Evergreen Communities Coordinator with the Department of Natural Resources Urban and Community Forestry Program. Um, our program has a longstanding relationship with the city of Snoqualmie. Uh, we look at your community as leaders in urban forestry within our state and our country. I want to emphasize a couple of really exciting accomplishments. So this is your 15th year being recognized as a tree city, which is very exciting. Uh, Tree City requires a community to meet four standards yearly and they also complete a yearly application. We have over 90 communities in Washington State and you're one of them. Um, I also want to congratulate you on your 10 years earning a growth award. Growth awards are for communities who are going above and beyond in their urban and community forestry programs. Um, it recognizes major milestones and annual activities that within five categories. So you get points for activities and you have to get 10 to become or to maintain your growth award. Um, what's really exciting about this year is this is your 10th consecutive year earning you the Sterling City Award. Um, the growth awards are not easy every year. They can get tricky some years and work easier or harder the others. So it's really exciting that you did 10 consecutive years and I think that the staff should get a little round of applause for all their hard work. Uh, this year's growth award was because you were able to support the growth and development, um, including Kyle maintaining or cert, getting his ISA certified arborist credential this year, uh, a tree risk assessment and creation of an annual report, uh, which Phil will be presenting shortly. Um, you have a very impressive staff and I want to just share a couple other messages with you all. Um, I hope that you walk away from here feeling really proud of yourself, your staff, your community and your leadership. Um, not everybody has this kind of wraparound support at their level. Um, I want to speak on behalf of DNR's Urban and Community Forestry Program. We are impressed. Um, I went to all of my coworkers and I said, everyone kind of give me something that you're really excited about. And I got documents and documents and documents of all the great things you've all been working on. Something that's really neat about your program is how proactive you are. A lot of our communities are still very reactive in their urban forestry. And I think that, um, because of this, you're saving money in the long run, you're mitigating, uh, risk and hazard to trees and to people. And I think that, sorry, I'll slow down. I know I'm getting excited. It's just so fun to talk about. But I encourage you to take the time to meet with Phil and your stormwater and urban forestry team to explore the work that's being done. Um, a couple of highlights that our programs really admired from your city and your community this last year is the tree risk assessment that was completed. Um, as I mentioned, a lot of communities are still reactive and this is a really great way to be proactive as well as the tree plantings, including the soil amendments. Um, to the untrained eye, this might not seem that exciting, but to the trained eye, it's a really important thing to keep your community thriving and your trees thriving. And of course, the very exciting integration of stormwater and urban forestry benefiting, uh, or preventing flooding, erosion, infrastructure overload. Uh, and the list just keeps going. And this model is really impressive. So actually, if you go on the Trees for Resilience Toolkit, your story is the success story that's blasted across the front of the page. So every time someone's interested in stormwater and trees, they see your community. Um, I just want to make sure that, uh, you all know that you are paving the way. You're being watched, you're being followed, and you're being used as an example for urban forestry. When we have a community come to us, we are usually pointing them to Snoqualmie to talk to Phil or to talk to the community. Um, and I think that that is something you should all be really proud of. I hope that you continue the momentum that's been building and you continue working on this. Uh, the job is never done. It's not, you don't get to a point and then you're, you tap out. This is an ongoing process that will continue forever. Um, I hope to continue to see you as leaders in urban forestry in the coming years and far into the future. Uh, we can only imagine all of the innovative things that are to come from you all. Um, I want to thank the city staff, including Phil, for inviting me to be here today. I want to thank the community and the volunteers for their involvement in the program. And I want to thank the city leadership here today for creating a space for this important work to be done. Uh, without all of those different components, none of this would happen. Uh, and I want to congratulate you on 15 years as a Tree City USA, 10 consecutive years with your growth award and earning your status as a Sterling City community. And I brought some fun Arbor Day patches and I'll leave them on the table in case anyone wants any.
Excellent. Thank you. It's very exciting news. We're, we are very proud of our urban forestry group. So thank you. It's so, Councillor Vincent.
Yeah, I, I just, I just, thank you. It's, it's, it's really, we know how great Phil is, um, but it's, it's really helpful to hear somebody who, who cares about this stuff and loves this stuff and is from outside the community to articulate so clearly and so well, all of the great things that Phil's spearheading and that our city is doing with trees and stormwater and, and just everything. So I really appreciate you articulating all that so well. That was, uh, I hope, I hope everybody in Sequoia gets to hear what you had to say about this program. So thank you.
Okay. So next, we're going to have Phil Bennett, um, provide the, actually the stormwater and urban forestry annual reports. We will learn more about the forestry program.
Not actually sure I can follow that.
Okay, so I have violated the city administrator's five-slide rule. So I'm gonna go through this very quickly, and hopefully I'll keep my job. So this is a view of where we, we live and work here in Snoqualmie, the upper Snoqualmie Valley. And this report is on stormwater and urban forestry. And the main message today is I wanted to make sure that, that the city leadership felt thanked for the investment that you made in the program last year. Because last year, we formed a combined division of urban forestry and stormwater and added two staff. That obviously has budget implications. That was a big investment. So I wanted to show you what we've done. So you get that circle back, and hopefully you're happy with it. And if you're not, please let me know. So it would be a mistake to think that I did this. I helped do it, but without the help of all the partners in the community that you see on this page, we really wouldn't have achieved very much. So there was help in terms of funding dollars. There was help in terms of people showing up to volunteer events. There was help in terms of other organizations coming onto city property and helping us restore our lands. So we're tremendously grateful to those folks, and Washington State DNR is part of that. So again, thank you, Julia, for coming. So we maintain a lot of stuff. We maintain 45 stormwater detention ponds, over 3,000 catch basins, miles of stormwater pipes. And then on the urban forestry side, we have 10,000 street and park trees. And then we also have 1,149 acres or about two square miles of city-owned forest land. We are a Tree City USA, and both the mayor and Julia mentioned that, so I won't, I won't mention too much there. But moving on, I wanted to give you a visual representation of where we were in 2023 and what we did. So we put a lot of different polygons on the map and colors so that you could see the different activities we're up to, which range from cleaning out stormwater ponds to replacing trail bridges to pruning trees. So it's all there on that map. One project I'd like to highlight is the Autumn Avenue Street Tree Replacement, which we did in 2023. So the picture in the center there shows a December night in 2022 where Autumn Avenue was falling apart. The trees were coming down that night. We would get a call from dispatch saying there is a tree down on Autumn Avenue. We'd go and clear the tree. We'd leave and go somewhere else. And then the call from dispatch would come in, there's a tree down on Autumn Avenue. I know, we just were there. We just, no, no, there's another one. And that continued through the night. So the, the project was, was well timed. And you can see at the picture at the bottom left, we dug out the poor soils that were there. We replaced them with deeper and better soils, and that's going to lead to a different result. The stormwater system was our big focus in 2023. There was a lot of work we needed to do to get things to, up to a standard that we felt would, would be acceptable. And so what I have here is a series of before and after pictures. So this first one is Woody Creek Pond, before and after cleaning. So the cleaning removes contaminated sediments. And again, it's all about making sure that the water that gets into the Snoqualmie is, is clean and pure. The top set of pictures is a vault that is, it's a before and after again. There's a huge amount of plastic inside that vault. People talk about nanoplastics and microplastics. Well, there were macroplastics in that vault, and we managed to get those out before, again, they traveled down through the system. And then the bottom images are a swale, which is a treatment, basically a biological treatment facility where stormwater runs and infiltrates into the ground. Doesn't always function well when it's completely overgrown, and perhaps the water gets diverted to places we don't want. So again, that was more work in 2023. Our Greens Snoqualmie partnership thrived as well. This is our volunteer-based and partner-based community forestry program that helps us maintain our forest land. And so we saw our volunteer hours go almost back up to pre-pandemic numbers last year, 893 hours. We got quite a lot in partner funding. Our partners really dug in, and again, their logos are on the screen there. And the gentleman at the top image, that's Kyle Markwart, he's, he became a certified arborist and is on our staff, and we're, we're lucky to have him. So this program is, is thriving. I'm hoping to see it grow quite a lot this year, and I'm hoping to see those volunteer hours. I'm gonna say it now in front of you. I'd like to see them double this year, and that's what we're working towards. Here are some events we did with Greens Snoqualmie in 2023. Greens Snoqualmie Day, which is the second picture down, was a wonderful event in October. We had almost 90 people show up to help us again restore city forest land. I'll mention as well, the bottom picture is a group Z-Tech, and Z-Tech are a business on Snoqualmie Ridge. They came out for four separate events last October and helped us out, and indeed, they were out with us today. So our day started at 8:00 AM this morning with Z-Tech, and we fixed a trail section that was just basically a mud hole. And those folks came out, some of the same people that you see there, coming back to give us a hand. So we're very grateful to them. We also did a lot of trail system maintenance in 2023. So you can see some before and after pictures there. So we replaced a couple of bridge decks. We replaced a boardwalk, and we generally did quite a bit of maintenance there last year. We do respond when the phone rings. We do respond when the email comes in. And so in 2023, we received 323 requests for service or information or inspection from residents, and we managed to resolve 318 of them. And then in conclusion, this is a team effort. It really isn't just me. It's a lot of people. It's the leadership of the council and committee. It's the, it's the residents showing up with their spare time to give us a hand. And it's our program and community partners who are just helping us every single day. So I'd just like to thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your investment in the program. And I wanted to ask if you had any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Okay. Moving on, next presentation is Snoqualmie Valley Food Bank. Introducing this item tonight is our food bank director, Alison Roberts.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Alison Roberts, and I'm the brand new executive director of the Snoqualmie Valley Food Bank. I'm about one month in, and I'm so grateful for the community's support and the warm welcome that I've received. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to share a little bit about our work, who we serve, and some of the challenges facing us. I feel very honored to be able to serve my community. I am local to the valley. I may be new to this food bank, but I'm not new to food bank management. So honored to be here and to serve, especially at a time where we're seeing increased need. Housing prices in the valley are extremely high. The cost of groceries has been increasing. And so the folks visiting our food bank, we're seeing an increase in visits and an increase in our need. I will be handing the rest of the presentation over to Dylan Johnson, who is our phenomenal operations manager. He's really the one that manages the day-to-day operations of the food bank. It's really the heart and soul of what makes the food bank special. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dylan.
Good evening, everybody. And also thank you again for allowing us to come and do a presentation today. Just wanted to talk about food bank and what we do. Lately, there are more than 250 households that visit every week. That's somewhere between 600 and 700 individuals, which is quite a lot of people for our small food bank. We are open on Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday each week. And Thursday morning is Senior Citizen Day only for an hour and a half, and it gives them a chance to come in. It's a little slower paced and just a little easier. We have a grocery store model that allows clients to choose the food that they need. We think that that provides more dignity and obviously more choice, whether there's dietary needs or choices. Providing assistance with dignity and care is especially essential in small cities like Snoqualmie while we're serving our neighbors. So who we serve, with high cost of housing, the rising cost of groceries, the food bank is observing a steady uptick in new families signaling up for food, signing up for assistance. Thirty-five percent of individuals served each month are children, 37% adults, and 28 are seniors. The food bank provides additional breakfast, lunch, and snack items to children in the Snoqualmie Valley School District during school breaks. So our meal for the breaks program, we provide extra food to anyone who has kids in the area for spring break, for, I believe, 10 weeks of summer break, and during the winter break and Christmas break. Let's see, many of the households, households that are served are working multiple jobs and are still unable to fully meet their family's basic needs. I oftentimes see folks come in in a rush wearing a Burger King or McDonald's uniform. They're working really hard, and they're taking their short amount of time to come to the food bank. Providing food for many people, food assistance is the first stop when you're facing financial distress. We connect people with the resources they need throughout the valley. We host partnering organizations at our site for direct access and outreach. The DSHS mobile office comes there. They can help people sign up for SNAP benefits, food stamps, things like that. Hope Link provides energy assistance. The North Bend Library sets up oftentimes and provides free books. We have hygiene and other personal care essentials through St. Clair's Church. They come once a month and set up an outside booth, providing paper towels or cleaning supplies, toiletries, clothes, warm hats and scarves during the cold seasons. Let's see here, the Pet Food Bank is also incredibly popular and necessary. Once a month, they also set up outside, providing cat food and dog food for folks that can't, can't afford it. We help clients place requests to KidVantage for diapers, formula clothes, car seats, and other infant or children essentials. And we pick up their orders for them. Many people have transportation issues. Next slide. The need has grown, but our space is not. We've long outgrown our space and find a new location to better serve our operations and clients as top priority. The small size of the food bank limits the number of clients we can serve at a time to four, creating long lines up to two hours during peak times. This is especially challenging because clients are forced to wait outside without shelter. The shopping area doesn't fit full-size shopping carts. They're actually those small-sized ones that you see at the stores. That limits families, the only food they can fit in the cart, they're often overflowing, and we have many volunteers trying to help bag up the groceries, but it's a bottleneck. It's really tough. We serve often vulnerable populations with physical, mental, and emotional needs that are hard to meet in a dignified way in our space. There are people in wheelchairs. There are people with walkers. There are people who have a couple of kids hanging off them. People who need service animals. It gets quite crowded in there. It's hard to restock the shelves when it's so crowded. Next slide, please. So our areas of focus, our growth, to find a location that will better serve the needs of our operations and guests. Connection increases community engagement and support through collaborative food and fund drives. And advocacy serves as a voice for our community and legislative matters that impact our mission. Another thing I'd like to add that is a priority of mine and ours is with our waste. We get food through food pickup seven days a week from QFC, seven days from Snoqualmie Ridge Safeway, five days a week from North Bend Safeway, once a week from Costco, twice a week from Metropolitan Market in Smaugish, once from Bartell Drugs on the ridge. I might even be missing something. We also get things from government agencies like TFAP. We get things from Northwest Harvest and Food Lifeline. Once a week in a large truck, mini pallets. It takes many dozens of volunteers to drive and pick up all this stuff and to help us move it. Everything has to be moved by hand. We don't have garage doors or anything like that. And so we get so much food that with the waste, the first thing we do is put it outside for pig farmers or chicken farmers, which I think is really valuable to keep it out of the landfill. And kind of in connection with the previous presentation that there was, about that truly related. And then after that, compost is the next step, and I do anything I can to avoid the landfill. I believe that's all the slides, and I wanted to thank you. Oh, there's one more. Thank you. Get involved. It truly takes a village. We're grateful for the support from the city of Snoqualmie and the community. Come check us out. Donate, volunteer. You can learn more at our website, snoqualmievallyfoodbank.org. And we are now open in some capacity seven days a week. So if you want to even just stop by with, you know, shake some hands, donate a couple cans of food or five bucks or something like that, it would be very helpful. I appreciate you having us, and I wanted to ask if there are any questions at all. Yes.
Councilor Cotton?
I just wanted to know, you're looking for a location. Preference as to, I mean, obviously Snoqualmie Valley, but any particular preference as to what, what area you're, you're looking in? Or just anything that kind of fits your needs?
How to get these centralized locations is extremely, I suppose, to be ideally comfortable on a fast line. My password and password, I see the challenges and access. The access is really different. We need a larger space. Right now, our space is a little bit, it's where we think the warehouse, shopping space, and offices. For context, this is what we think, just sort of their capital giving space, their shopping area.
Our space, from what I understand, is a converted, previously a garage of the North Bend community. It's quite small. A lot of the addition to it was made by volunteers, which is very appreciated. But a little bit, a little piece here, a little piece there. It's not entirely cohesive, and we kind of get by if we can. We have one large heater up here at the ceiling, but we have to have three doors open at all times, having people come in and out. We close one of them when it's windy. Only four can be in the place at a time, and in the summer, it's 90 degrees outside. It's way worse inside. And the folks who are waiting in line have to be out there. So they're getting rained on, they're pale, just hot sun. I've seen people starting to have heat problems. We do our best to get water bottles outside.
We have a deep belief in the power of collaboration, and the food bank's really unique in the position to, from a practice of, we see a lot of the same folks we got this week. It's also one of the first places that people come, facing projections. So we're, should be well positioned to be able to, we have them with the resources. The valley was a wonderful, whole organizations here. Unfortunately, we have such face space, we don't have any private place to talk to folks. So we, I think we're a case worker or a resource coordinator. We don't have a physical space for them. So we're a little bit more limited than we'd like to be.
Councilor, do you have any more questions? Councilor Vincent?
Is there a best way to donate to the food bank?
If I might take that. I would say yes, dollars. Financial donations are the best. For example, we get a lot of donations from private citizens and food drives and things. But I do an order from Charlie's Produce every week, and the day of my order, which is today, actually, they send an email, a special sheet of things that are still very good, viable food, that are getting toward the end. It's all perishable. And one example I like to use was for a few weeks in a row, I was getting 40-pound boxes of bananas that were not overripe. They were perfectly ripe for $7.85. So a $5 donation can almost buy four. I mean, when, when we come, when it comes to things like that, I can get special discounts that are sent to just the food bank. And I have a background in sustainable agriculture from the Evergreen State College. I sold at farmers markets, and I've worked in restaurants my entire life. I've personally thrown away many thousands of pounds of food because it was my job. It was against my will. I don't care for that. I do what I can. I'm very passionate about trying to do the best I can and not waste any food.
So you can do more with the dollars than the donee can, can do with the dollars?
Frankly, much more, yes.
Any other questions or comments? So thank you, Alison and Dylan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Next up is budget introduction and training presented by our finance director, Drew Butey.
Thank you, Mayor, so I think to start off with Councilmember Benson, I just want to let you know that I too also have a man crush on Dylan. And I guess that feeling is pretty universal. Uh, so with that said, thank you, Council, welcome to this introduction to the budget and a financial forecast.
I just want to say that that does not limit my capacity for my same man crush on you.
Oh. I appreciate that, right back at you. All right, so with that, the goal of the presentation, oh, actually, I'm not even in the presentation. Alright, so the goal of the presentation is to set the table for a budget conversation that is going to last most of the year. And it's gonna be probably a long drawn-out conversation, there's certainly going to be some heated questions, some comments right here overall. But it's a process that is absolutely critical to the overall financial health of the city and we're looking forward to kind of kickstarting that conversation with you. Uh, today I hope to provide the city of Snoqualmie's basic foundations for budgeting as well as provide an update. Uh, of the ten-year financial forecast for a specific category called governmental operating. The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget, which is what we're in right now. Really represents a sense of renewal at the city. Was intended as a lift following the trauma experienced during the pandemic and we certainly have fire and police back here and parks and public works that really. Serve the community exceptionally well during that time period and from all those changes that we experienced during that. Really this class or this current biennial budget was to help us kind of lift ourselves up from that phase itself and. Get us prepared for the next stage of our continuing journey. I believe right now while it's ongoing that the city of Snoqualmie has emerged from the pandemic renewed overall. The challenge now is maintaining that sense of renewal and no doubt transformation and carrying it into the next biennial for twenty-five and twenty-six. In other words, we want to ask the question, how can the city of Snoqualmie continue to transform over the next two years to be the best small city in America if not already? Consequently, we'll be looking for ideas from Council, from others as well, old and new, for how to accomplish and complete that challenge. One incredibly important question is how do we know that we're transforming in the right direction? Well, the basic starting point for any conversation is our guiding lights. Our guiding lights are your council priorities as well as the city's vision and mission. And no doubt during the retreat, a lot of time was probably spent there trying to flush out the council's priorities overall. Your priorities and the city's long-term vision and mission will help to provide the clarity needed to staff. And ultimately staff during that budget process, because of that clarity provided, we'll be working to direct the dollars available to unlock those priorities you have for Snoqualmie. And because of that, we hope to measure that over time through city surveys so we can see that achievement taking place on an annual basis overall. Want to achieve that success and that success is defined by the priorities that Council sets. And so we all know however, that ultimately we couldn't unlock every council priority if the city had unlimited dollars at its disposal. But we all know that that is impossible, that funding scarcity is a real constraint and that therefore the city cannot exceed its means. Otherwise, insolvency is a real possibility. As a result, the city of Snoqualmie works hard to maintain a balanced budget every biennial, making ever so sure that we live within our means. In order to keep up and preserve that principle, living within our means, the city has established a balanced budget requirement. In its financial policies, which is represented by section five point four here. I'm just going to read that out for everyone, for everyone's benefit. Uh, overall, the objective of the operating budget is to pay for all current expenditures with current revenues. The budgets for all city funds should be structurally balanced throughout the budget development process. Recurring, otherwise known as ongoing revenue, should equal or exceed reoccurring expenditures in both the proposed and adopted budgets. Structural imbalance occurs, then a plan should be developed and implemented to bring the budget back into structural balance. City will endeavor to avoid budgetary allocations that balance current expenditures at the expense of meaning future years expenses. Beginning fund balance sources may be used to fund capital from projects or other one-time non-reoccurring expenditures if the fund reserve targets are met. Not only do we also, do we focus on our guiding lights, city's vision and mission as well as your council priorities. But this is also a north star that we have to be attuned to moving forward during the budget process. Just to go over some words a little bit ongoing, in this instance, a recurring simply means. Uh, revenue or expenditures that you can expect to repeat year after year after year. You only collect or pay for something once, then it is not an ongoing revenue or expenditure. Other cities may not make the distinction between ongoing versus one-time revenues and expenditures. And so this is a more strict definition that we're applying here because we want to make sure. That we fulfill that goal of operational stability over time, which as you've seen before is a part of your council goals and priorities. Operational stability, we'll often use this word as well as sustainability. Sustainability, financial sustainability is one of those principles that you'll hear pretty repeatedly as we move forward from here on out. And so with that said, the balanced budget requirement is absolutely essential to all the work that we're going to be doing from here on through the end of the period. Through the budget cycle. Now internally, the administration and staff must put into practice the balanced budget requirement and our operational stability goal. To do so, the budget team is often using a matching principle, which me, which means that the city of Snoqualmie will match the most consistent or ongoing abuses with the most consistent or ongoing revenue streams. Now and over time, the staff will take the time over the next few months to measure a use or revenue for its long-term volatility. In order to match the revenue to the appropriate use and determine whether the city is operation, operationally stable and balanced. Staff will often ask a series of questions as indicated by the graphic. Staff is first going to want to know, does the city intend to use a revenue stream for operations or capital? This has been kind of clearly defined relatively well here in the past overall. We know that REIT goes to capital, we know that property taxes goes to governmental operating and so on. So that's been really, really well established here over time. The next question that staff will often ask is, is the revenue restricted externally, committed internally or neither? If a revenue is restricted externally, then an outside agency such as the state has put a restriction on a revenue and how it can be used. Good example is REIT again, REIT can really only be used for capital purposes. There's a few exceptions in there, but primarily it's there for capital purposes. Furthermore, utility fees, utilities are not there to be spent on police or fire. They're there to pay for our water, sewer and stormwater operations and capital. If a revenue is committed internally, then council has put a restriction on a revenue and how it can be used. That means council can determine how staff utilizes revenue. So a good example of this right now is the utility tax, we've got three, well, not three percent. So one-third of our utility tax on solid waste and water, sewer, stormwater. Goes towards the capital program to help repave streets right now and that was a condition that council had placed on that source of revenue. Lastly, if the revenue is neither, then it can be used for anything generally. There are sources of revenue such as sales taxes that could be used in different ways, property taxes as well, that aren't just restricted to just one thing, but could be deployed in any manner that council sees fit. Another question that we'll ask is how, you know, as kind of stated already, how consistent is the revenue stream over time? Is the revenue ongoing, can it be repeated year after year after year? Or is it just one time in nature? And as a consequence of that, we'll often ask the next question is, well then we should be pairing up. One-time sources revenue with one-time sources of expenditures and ongoing revenues with ongoing expenses over time. And so we want to make sure that we're consistently doing that, ask that overall, and that will help to determine if we're sustainable moving forward or not. So the next piece to this puzzle overall is, in many cases, cities actually struggle with a structural imbalance where their ongoing expenditures continuously exceed ongoing revenues. Or will at some point in time. I counsel, for those that have served on council for a while, knows that the city of Snoqualmie in the future. Will see the lines cross where our ongoing expenditures will exceed ongoing revenues at some point in the future. And that's primarily because the city is more reliant on property taxes than sales taxes to fund ongoing lease, fire, parks and street maintenance expenditures. And specifically, I'm talking more about governmental operating, which is basically where those services are provided out of. Um, as a result, the city is working to rebalance its revenue portfolio so that it is more equally weighted between property and sales taxes. Indeed, council has taken two actions this year. Council has approved a point one percent TBD sales tax, which we are expected to start collecting in June of this year. As well as has put on the ballot as proposition number one, a public safety sales tax at imposed at point one percent as well. Uh, that the voters will vote on at the primary election, August the sixth of this year. And so we're hoping to, as a result of this, rebalance our portfolio so that it's real less reliant on property taxes which have a limitation attached to that. Uh, and therefore we're better able to keep up with the inflationary increases that we experienced with our expenditures. Uh, but don't quite see those same degree of increases with our revenues. Often, if we're structurally imbalanced, then what kind of financial strategies do councils use to maintain a balanced budget over time? Well, often internally, we're going to look at how we can optimize our levels of service. To get the most bang for the buck overall, that return on investment is absolutely critical and we want to drive that as part of our overall conversation. We may also want to seek how we can develop economically through tourism plan or things like that. Enacting, implementing a lot of those types of items may help to draw people to the community. And then ideally they'll be spending their dollars here on, you know, the, what we can provide overall. And lastly, we just talked about two of the options that council took in January of this year, enhancing revenues. And one of the things that we've often been doing is we're considering all options, all options are on the table, I think council appreciates the optionality that staff often provides. And we're really seeking a balanced approach to maintaining a balanced budget between all of these three different levers that we have at our disposal. Some cases, other cities may delay action. City of Snoqualmie has not been a city that has delayed any sort of action. We've been extremely proactive in terms of finding, figuring out where we are in terms of our expenditures exceeding the revenues. And taking the actions that we need to do in order to push out that curve even further. Other cities may delay actions and as a result, it's going to increase their structural balance, imbalances. And it ultimately will harm that city's ability to provide services to their residents at the levels of desire. And that's not something that we necessarily want to reach and so we're often looking for these three levers to see what we can do to help keep our budget balanced over time. Now, just to go a little bit further. I talked about governmental operating, well, there are three other buckets that we're often concerned with as well. Just to go over the four buckets that I've got here in this slide, governmental operating basically accounts for the goods and services provided by direct service departments. And the administration of those departments, it's funded primarily through general taxes and fees and charges to external users. And when you think of governmental operating, should be thinking of things such as finance, HR, police, fire, development, parks and street maintenance. They're all included as part of governmental operating. Terms of the next budget, governmental capital accounts for the provision of non-utility capital assets, it's funded primarily through restricted taxes and fees such as REIT. Committed taxes and fees and grants, includes things such as transportation, parks, facilities and facilities capital expenditures. The next one is utilities, basically what we call enterprise funds. Uh, which basically account for the goods and services provided by utilities and they're generally funded through charges to external users. So your utility bill goes to pay for the water, sewer and stormwater coverage that we provide overall to the city. And then lastly, we also have internal services as well that accounts for the goods and services provided to other departments. And it's generally funded through charges to those other departments. And includes things such as your fleet, facilities and fleet, facilities maintenance and IT as a part of that overall. Now with these four separate buckets, we'll actually be during this next period of time, this during this budget process, really exploring each one. In as much in-depth as we possibly can, and so there are four financial products, one product kind of tied to each thing that you're going to see pretty repeatedly over time. We're going to actually discuss later today, or not later today, but the next portion of this presentation is to go over financial forecasts. Which is really tied to that bucket in yellow right now, their governmental operating. Eventually, we're going to be turning to a conversation coming up in May regarding the non-utilities portion in the CIP. That non-utilities portion of the CIP is really a financial plan for this bucket called governmental capital. In addition to that, we're going to be exploring a little bit further beyond that. Once we kind of get through the non-utility CIP itself, we're going to start having conversation about utility rates and how much we should be setting, or what we should be setting those utility rates at. Primarily because we need to figure out what is our capital plan when it comes to the utilities. Uh, capital fund as well as our operations as well. And so we're going to be developing really a financial plan, utilizing that utility rate study to figure out how we're going to be funding our enterprise, our utilities. Over a period of time. And then lastly, for internal services, we intend to develop an internal cost allocation plan, or we have a draft from Jana. Produced and we're going to have to update that for this next go-around, not to put you on the spot, sorry. When it comes to that, but in essence, we intend to develop an internal cost allocation plan that kind of shows. How we would cost allocate out our internal services across the other departments. Effectively, these four financial products that we intend to produce between here and October. Will go into the biennial budget in which council will be adopting at that time. So all four of these things will influence what goes into that biennial budget for each of the bucket. Now, council's probably pretty aware, you'll hear things from the finance department called funds. Funds are not necessarily fun, they're just accounting tools that we need in order to keep track of money, I think overall. And so consequently, you know, and you guys know I love colors as much as anyone. So we're going to take these colors and I'm just going to splash them across the funds, right, for the most part. And so in essence, when we talk about governmental operating, we're often talking about the general fund and the reserve fund and there's a couple other. Relatively smaller funds in there as well that we'll be considering. As part of the general fund, you'll often hear about functional classifications such as police, fire, parks and street maintenance, development. In addition to that, when we talk about the governmental capital, we're often looking at a couple of funds in the blue here. Primarily driven around that non-utilities capital fund, but also you'll see the ERP project fund that council. Approved last year, um, not the project itself, but the creation of the fund. And then you also see in green here, the utility funds, so water operations, sewer operations, stormwater operations and our utilities capital fund. And then lastly, you'll see the three internal service funds. So in essence, those financial products that we produce will often be tied to the funds that you see here on this list overall. And so when council goes to adopt the budget, we're actually appropriating per each fund. Uh, we're not appropriating per bucket, we're not appropriating just one number for the city, we're appropriating for each fund overall. And so basically, well, this has been the kind of take something large and try to shrink it to the fund here. Um, and so. Our minds are going to have to kind of perform much like an accordion. Over the next couple of months here as we kind of go through this budget process. So with that said, I just want to kind of turn my attention to the importance of financial forecasting, which is what we're going to get into next. A lot of the financial products that you see that we're intending to produce are basically a financial plan moving forward or a financial forecast. Really, the purpose of a financial forecast is to evaluate current and future financial conditions to guide policy and level of service decisions. Forecasting can help the city of Snoqualmie to plan for the future, help us to identify future revenue expenditure trends that may have an immediate or long-term influence on the city. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that over time. In addition, it will help the council make informed decisions with forecasts, the city can make more informed decisions about where it chooses to allocate resources. Or the financial strategies it may need to adopt and sustain services over a long period of time. I think council loved the dynamic chart that we were able to provide earlier this year and we'll bring that back probably at another phase down the road overall. But it helps us to really analyze the sensitivity to some of the decisions that council may want to make, I think overall moving forward and it helps us with that kind of scenario testing. So council will be able to kind of describe for the finance, I'd like to see this, this or this and what the impact is. And our goal would be to show you what that impact kind of looks like overall, so that you guys can make better informed decisions. In addition to that, it can help us to identify potential problems, forecasting can help the city to identify problems before they become major issues. This includes everything from budget deficits to changes in the economic landscape. Where it came from did not have a financial forecast. They didn't look out beyond two years and so consequently, they didn't quite know what was coming down the road. And so we want to make sure that we stay ahead of that, that we know what is not only today look like. What the next year looks like, but also what does five years look like and what do we need to do now to be proactive to maybe stave off any sort of structural imbalance and so on. And what do we need to do now to be proactive to maybe stave off any sort of structural imbalance and so on. So next, we often have to kind of describe some of the key uncertainties come with forecasting. I tend to think of forecasting as a catalog of assumptions. Those assumptions will be tested over time. Or, you know, in some cases, we'll do what we can to be as accurate as possible, but because they are assumptions, we are not going to be perfect a hundred percent of the time. And so it's important to keep that in mind as well, that there's going to be some sort of error rate associated with it. We're doing our best to try to get you into the ballpark itself. That sense. One of those key uncertainties is economics, what's happening in the broader economy overall. And so right now, the economy continues to grow with inflation flattening and employment remaining relatively strong but weakened. Therefore, right now, it appears that the US has navigated to a soft landing. And I talk about a soft landing, that we haven't experienced a recession, that the interest rates haven't been driven up so high. That we've now tanked into recession and we're going the opposite direction. Basically, it's like a, it's a plane that has somehow managed a landing that is relatively safe, that everyone comfortable onboard. Even though there was a lot of turbulence along the way overall. However, several risks should temper our excitement, including continued geopolitical issues, an economic slump in China, rising consumer debt and elevated interest rates. In addition, core inflation remains relatively sticky. Jerome Powell, who is the Fed chair, recently remarked that the committee does not expect that it would be appropriate to reduce the target range. Until it has gained greater confidence that inflation is moving sustainably toward two percent. A lot of the market, especially the stock market these days, has built in this expectation that they're going to start cutting rates. Especially the Fed Fund rate, they haven't quite done that yet, primarily because inflation has been relatively sticky. Out there overall, and they're not seeing it quite get to two percent. Stuck around two point five, three percent, somewhere within that range overall. And they're waiting to see if there's more, there's going to be more of an impact from where the rates are currently set right now to help drive that down to two. Once they get a better indication regarding that, then they may start to think about actually cutting the Fed Funds rate, which will drive other interest rates down overall. As a result, the economy is not quite cooling as anticipated, therefore restricted monetary policy will persist. Which basically means the Fed's going to keep the, it's going to keep the Fed Funds rate basically where it is right now. If not more until two percent inflation is realized as a result right now. And, you know, it's kind of hard to get a gauge on this necessarily, because you'll see one news report that says this guy predicts that we're going to go into recession. And then this guy over here says, no, that's not a chance of it. But I've tried to look into what I can in a survey of different forecasts. I'm putting the chances of recession really at roughly thirty-five percent within the next twelve months. So that is a potential risk overall that we have to be mindful of. And that picture may change the farther that we go towards our adoption date overall. So we'll be bringing this back to you, trying to think, is a recession likely? Recession's likely, then we may have to take some action between now and then to get that under wraps. With that said, there are other key uncertainties that we also will need to, you know, incorporate into the forecast, maybe in the future or that we can't quite right now. That includes the vote on the proposition number one, public safety sales tax. Other revenue decisions or changes, and there are other revenues that we'll have to consider too. You know, solid waste contract, for example, DNO tax audit, comprehensive fee study. Some of those decisions were, if they happen to come in and we start collecting that, may alter our financial forecast over time. And so you'll see that reflected in updates to this. Financial forecast is really a snapshot in time, so what we're going to give you today is really just a snapshot for today, but that could change as we move into the future. In addition to that, there are also some future cost of living adjustments. I struck out chiefsters, local union, because council went through that last year. In addition, earlier this year, council approved a poll for the nonrepresented employees as well. And so a lot of these were really pandemic-driven inflationary or cost of living adjustments as well. A lot of staff experienced nine percent inflationary increases, and so we've had to kind of. Really see this kind of whale moving through, right, overall, our finances, how we address those issues overall. Well, we've got two other unions that we're going to have to address, that are going to be coming through our financials as well. Including the poll for whatever potential poll it is for the Sofomi Police Association. As well as after that, exploring what they, we may need to do with the International Association of Firefighters. In addition to that, we're going to have to, you know, explore what the North Bend Police Service's contract kind of looks like overall. And how that may impact both the city of North Bend as well as the city of Sofomi. There may be other service decisions that council would like to make that could impact the financial forecast moving forward. And then lastly, the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty capital improvement plan two is potentially another uncertainty that we'll have to address. And that more information obviously will be coming and council will be making a decision ultimately that could have an impact on the financial forecast down the road. So with that said, certainly no one can really see that up there, so I've got paper copies. Alright, so I think the majority of council is familiar with the sheet overall right here. And I know it's going to take a while to kind of get moving down there, but anyway, this is your raw material. This is really our, you know, really detailed forecast overall. That you're going to see in a chart that's going to come up, that really focuses on the general fund and the reserve fund overall. And how we're doing across over a ten-year period overall. And so what you're going to notice basically is the general fund at top between one and forty-nine. Row's one and forty-nine is the general fund, between rows fifty and fifty-nine is the reserve fund. In columns B through K, we're going to see the twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-two. I've got descriptors for each year. Twenty twenty-three is an estimate of actions through December of twenty twenty-three. It's our estimate of where we finished the year at this point, the books aren't completely closed yet, but we're rounding that into shape for the most part. And we think that's a pretty decent picture for you right there. In addition to that, you'll see twenty-four is an estimate where we think we're going to end up by year end. That includes the first three months of data so far that we have. In addition to forecast for the next nine months as well as part of that, added together to come up with a twenty twenty-four estimated year end. And then from twenty-five through twenty thirty-two, you're going to see a projection out there. Largely based on our inflation assumptions and other information such as that, other variables such as that. In the general fund itself, row number three is the beginning fund balance. That's basically the cash that we have on hand when it comes to the general fund. Below that, rows four through twelve is our estimate of ongoing revenues between twenty twenty-three and twenty thirty-two. Rows thirteen through twenty-three represents our anticipated ongoing expenditures. Twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-two. And then ultimately, what you get from that is row twenty-four, which is probably the most important row. That we're going to be having a discussion on between now and the end of the budget process. Is really this ongoing revenues over or under ongoing expenditures. This is in essence where the balanced budget requirement comes into play. Right now, you've got highlighted in columns B and C for row twenty-four in red. Right now, for this budget, I mean, we're, in terms of this biennial budget, we are now fifteen months into it. We are generally balanced, but now we're going to be turning our focus to twenty-five and twenty-six and seeing if we're going to be balanced during that time period as well. So for twenty-five and twenty-six, you'll see right now that our revenues do exceed our ongoing expenditures. But then that will change when it comes to twenty-seven and twenty-eight. For right now, we're going to be focusing on really that two-year period, that two-year window, twenty-five and twenty-six overall. And really, there isn't much more that we anticipate in terms of ongoing revenues exceeding our ongoing expenses. With that said, right below that, you know, between rows twenty-five and forty, you'll see one-time revenues or expenditures. In essence, these are items that were removed from our ongoing expenditures because they're one-time in nature. In essence, by the end of this two-year period, we would cut those off for the most part. Which ideally, you're not going to see these expenditures continue over time. If they do, then they should be included in the ongoing expenditures above that. And then below that as well is our transfers to other funds. Or from, in from other funds as well, that we have to account for when we're trying to figure out what is our ending cash balance for that year. And so what you're going to see in row forty-eight is the ending fund balance for the general fund between twenty twenty-three and twenty thirty-two. Over time, you're going to see that fund balance actually decrease. By twenty thirty-two, we're predicting that we're going to have roughly fourteen thousand dollars in our fund balance in the general fund. But I would completely worry because below that, we have a reserve fund. A reserve fund that is fully reserved through twenty thirty-two. And so we do have a protection menu there. It's helped us balance, we will not balance, but help us to protect ourselves in case we get to that stage. Ideally, over time, the goal is to work proactively to push out that curve as much as possible. To push out the point in which our ongoing expenditures are going to exceed our ongoing revenues, which is right now projected for twenty twenty-seven. And so in essence, with that in mind, I know we've got to move on quickly here as well, I'm going to put this aside. Actually move to the next slide right here. This one is a chart that I think a lot of you are familiar with. And really, what this is representing is it's representing rows twelve and twenty-three. To give you a clear picture of how those ongoing revenues compare against our ongoing expenditures over time. And so what you're seeing is you're seeing our twenty twenty-three, you can see that certainly our ongoing revenues exceed our ongoing expenses. Primarily due to the attrition that we experienced this past year. You're seeing some uptick in terms of our expenditures for twenty twenty-four, but still our ongoing revenues are going to exceed that. It's forecasted that it's going to exceed it. And then twenty twenty-five, you're going to see that actually there's much more of a balance there between our revenues and expenses. However, our revenues are not going to grow at the same rate as our expenditures over time. And so consequently, that's why we need to turn to that Venn diagram for the most part. To really help us figure out what options do we want to take in order to push out this curve as much as possible. And so with that said, that is basically what that chart represents right there, is really comparison between row twelve and row three.
So Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, two questions. First, does this chart assume that voters do implement the tax orders? Is assuming that they don't?
This assumes that they don't.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Well, we're not making a comment on whether they do or not, the revenues haven't been included.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, yeah, to be clear. Yeah, so this does not include that having been in.
Appreciate them voting in favor of it, but yes.
And then the other question was, under the licenses and permit fees, there's a big jump from twenty-three to twenty-four. I assume that that assumes that we're going to implement fees that we have not done yet. Is that correct?
That's part of it, but there's also some permit activity that we're expecting as well, so.
Okay, this is not just that.
It's not just that, no.
Okay, so just the point being that, as I said before, not all of that actually exists, we haven't actually done that. This is assuming that we're going to, so these numbers, or the, the lines do cross earlier if we didn't do that.
So let me just, so for the license permit fees, we have a property on the ridge, for example, that still is expected to be. Developed overall, right, with additional homes, right? So consequently, that was expected for this year, that's still in here. I'd have to obviously work with Emily to see if that's still a possibility or not. We'll be kind of kids following up on those discussion points overall. In terms of the comprehensive fee study, which was planned for, we put three hundred thousand dollars in here regarding that. I've actually delayed that to twenty twenty-five because it doesn't look like we'll be able to generate that money in this year. And that would have been within the charges for goods and services overall.
Councilor Washington?
Just to be clear, that, the three hundred thousand that you mentioned has been delayed, so it's not.
Talking into the mic, please.
The three hundred thousand that you mentioned has been delayed, so it's not included until twenty twenty-five.
That is correct. Basically, we have to issue the RFP, once we do so, then ideally, we're going to be starting that process, but. We haven't delivered on the comprehensive fee plan as quickly as we wanted to in the twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
So with that said, I also have revenue assumptions kind of built in as well. So twenty twenty-three estimated and actual is based on actual revenues through December twenty twenty-three. The revenue generated by the Grand Emergency Medical Transport Program was a year earlier than anticipated, so that's actually a benefit for the city. We thought we were going to start receiving that in twenty twenty-four, but we actually. Do the fire chief and Tammy over there, we got to that more quickly than we had anticipated. In addition to that, there was a significant increase in developer reimbursed revenues, thanks to the community development department. So they've really been working hard on making sure that we get paid and follow up on any sort of fills that haven't been paid yet as well. So they've really taken the lead on that, which has been really beneficial overall, I think, to the city. With that said, the twenty twenty-four estimated year end is primarily based on inflation forecast, either from county or the city's historical averages. It includes the revenue generated by the point one percent TBD sales tax. Accounts as well for the loss of revenue generated by the Salish Lodge and Spa and other tribal property that has been put into trust. And then, as I stated, delays the revenue expected from the comprehensive fee study to twenty twenty-five. Next, in terms of the outer years, the outer years is primarily based on inflation forecast, either from county or the city's historical averages. Does not include any revenue increases from potential development or revenue increases from yet to be decided sources, such as proposition number one, public safety sales tax. So there's assumptions built into it, we're not assuming that revenue, we're also not assuming any sort of bill out that over time. And so that may temper, like I said, it's a catalog of assumptions. Council can determine if those assumptions were correct or not, but then we can also look to see, well, what happens if we're, instead of saying no to assumption, we were to say yes to an assumption, for example. And see what that impact is. But for right now, that's what's been kind of generally excluded from the outer years. In addition to that, in terms of expenditure assumptions, twenty twenty-three estimated actual is based on actual expenditures through December twenty twenty-three. Makes sense, twenty twenty-four estimated year end is based on actual expenditures through March of twenty twenty-four. A forecast for the remaining nine months based on historical spinning patterns and accounts for the most recent budget amendment as well, so that's built into here. And then outer years incorporates inflation forecast from the county office at Agno and financial analysis. Assumes the same number of positions over time and assumes full staffing as well. So those are also some assumptions that come into play when we look at this too. With that said, we're going to get to a biennial budget calendar, we'll have more discussion then, but thank you council for your time. I'd like to, I guess, turn it over to the chair.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for our finance director? Councilor Vincent?
Thank you for that explanation, really, really helpful to have that overview. One thing that I didn't pick up on, I'm almost certain you explained it, but my capacity to miss things is enormous. I noticed that in years twenty-five through thirty-two, in the total ongoing expenditures. The increase year over year is somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six hundred thousand dollars. But in the twenty-four to twenty-five, it's about one point three million. What, what, what was the reason for the big difference?
So when we talk about assumptions, assumptions are really critical. The city is working towards getting back to full staff, right, overall. And so we still have a number of vacant positions overall, and say that HR is really working hard to try to fill those positions. You know, part of the assumption is assuming that we have a vacancy rate over between twenty-five and twenty thirty-two of zero percent. Which how likely is it that we're going to actually achieve that vacancy rate? We'll determine that over time and have discussions regarding that down the road overall. But we are working back towards full staffing overall. And that's why, if you were to take a look at the chart, you can see the, how the slope is between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five. Assuming that we're going to get back to full staffing and then twenty-six through twenty thirty-two is assuming that full staffing moving forward. So there's a bent triangle there, right there at that, often referred to mainly as the sharp bend in the past, I'm not quite positive, but anyway.
And that's the assumption that creates that. Okay, thank you, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Right, thank you. This is the beginning of many meetings regarding the biennial budget and capital improvement plans. Right, at this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on items that are not on the agenda. First, a few ground rules, yes, some kind of residents who are not present have right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city. In efficient orderly manners, so comments will be limited to three minutes each. Please be to be recognized and state your name and city of residence. Direct comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor or staff or to engage in debate. And public comments during this portion of the meeting shall be limited to topics concerning current, future or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans. And regulations, comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane, it may result in your comments being suspended. And last, please respect the decorum of these proceedings, as all respect, we will. And last, please respect the decorum of these proceedings. As all respect, we will be afforded you. And early in the meeting, we did vote to suspend any online comments. So with that, anyone in council chambers wish to put a comment, see Luke?
Good evening. With Rosack, seven six three two Heather Avenue Southeast. And there's a few facts I'd like to bring to the council's attention, I've been able to dig up regarding the fire weed cannabis dispensary that opened two days ago. Since Washington and Colorado actually legalized cannabis in two thousand fourteen, NIH collected huge amount of data. One of those data points is that when a dispensary is open in the zip code, there is a six point eight percent increase in hospitalizations with the marijuana abuse dependence code. One data point I'd like to throw out there. Go the onion a little bit further. If you look at what the NIH does, there's two categories that I wasn't keenly aware of. One is with low THA THC, the active ingredients, and one is with high THC. Not sure how they define it, but the two articles for this purpose is is low is less than ten percent. High is greater than sixty percent. Some stuff in the middle there, but let's just go with this. Those are the articles I found. With low THC, the effects are of this cannabis, apparent memory altered since the time. Mood changes, difficulty thinking, problem solving. It might even cause cognitive damage, maybe, likely, and changes in young. But there's some equivocation of that. This is the recreational marijuana that everybody debated in twenty twelve. And this is what they, Washington State made a law about the several grams. Since that time, and I remember twenty fifteen in the meeting with the hospital's president, they talked about they're going to do some lobbying. Since that time, they've been done concentrations and the concentration applies high THC to greater sixty percent. So now let's talk about that because this, the NIH's data over ten years has no application. It is highly addictive. It can cause hallucinations. It can cause delusions. In twenty five percent of the time, if somebody has not tried it before, they take a super dose like this, which is six to ten times more than the regular one. It turns into psychotic episode. And it could cause, it actually will cause cognitive brain damage, changes in the young, and in some cases, the lasting loss of IQ points for two seconds. If you look at the fire weed cannabis shop, fifty of the THC concentrates are less than ten percent, but I counted eighteen that were greater than sixty percent. Ninety one percent being the highest. I think there's three recommendations that come out of this. One, I think we should request that THC doses greater than ten percent not be offered. I think the NIH's NIH data says that's a good idea. Two, I think we should monitor with the hospital admissions and see if we're seeing above. That NIH thought we could. Three, I think we should communicate like crazy to our citizens that we have a potential risk.
Thank you. Anyone else like to have a public comment? You're the the pet food person at the.
I am.
Food bank as well.
Yeah, yeah, which we're out of a U-Haul because there is no space for us. Like, we literally have to take everything back with us. You can't even leave it for the other days. I feel kind of bad because it's only once a month.
Say your name and city.
Dory Ross in Snoqualmie, both business and residential. And obviously, I'm assuming most everybody knows we had a fire this weekend or last weekend. Sorry, I've lost all the sacred days. Right? But I mainly just wanted to say thank you to the police. And especially the gentleman Corey that literally drove around because he smelled smoke. I don't know if everybody knows that's how it happened. He literally drove around until he found it. It had been burning for about an hour at that point, so it was fully engulfed. And then our amazing fire department. Which literally saved the entire town because I'm sure we're all aware how close we are. We could have had. One heck of a, you know, like Katie keeps saying, a smores event, but. Yeah, they they did an amazing job. I don't know if you've, anybody's got to go down there afterwards. Literally down to earth has zero. It's like it didn't even happen. They have, some of their plants have been pushed down by the water, which is expected, but that none of them, I mean, they saved the tree. The tree is perfect. And so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody and all the support from the city and everybody that's come out and. Come to my house since I moved two houses away, literally two weeks before. But anyway, we just wanted to say thank you so much. Thank you.
Any public comment?
You live next door and and the cop smelled it first?
Yeah.
Wow. That's top flight police work.
Public comment is now closed. So move on to the consent agenda. Contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated April sixth and April eighth, twenty twenty four. And approve the claims reports dated April twenty second, twenty twenty four. Is there any public comment regarding either of these items? So raise your hand. See none? Council, any discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, is there a motion to approve it?
So move. Second.
By Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Washington. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any posnay? Okay, the consent agenda is unanimously approved. Next item is ordinances. The first ordinance is AB twenty four dash zero two six, ordinance amending SMC chapters two point zero six, two point zero eight. Two point eleven, two point twelve, two point sixteen, and two point twenty two, and repealing chapters two ten and two fifty six. This is the second reading ordinance twelve eighty seven. Mayor Protim Halli, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Updates to squirm invisible code SMC are needed to clarify, add, or delete sections for each of the advisory bodies, which. Which will now be made consistent through the commission handbook. Except where otherwise required by state law. In addition, this proposal includes the repeal of two chapters of the SMC, which are obsolete. The Library Advisory Board and Economic Development Corporation. Move to adopt ordinance twelve eighty seven amendments squirm invisible code chapters. Two dot oh six, two dot oh eight, two dot one one, two dot one two, two dot one six, two dot two two. And repealing chapters two dot one zero and two dot five six. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protim Halli, second by Councilor Washington for the approval of AB twenty four dash zero two six. Council, first of all, is there any public comment regarding this item? See none? Council, any discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, on the planning commission, what I thought was that. The reference to what counted as a quorum and the removal of office was not going to be struck. Apparently, it is going to be struck. So I was a little bit confused on that. Is it supposed to be struck or is it not? Okay.
Fish and ham.
Okay, so then follow up on that. So because the planning commission is a very specific thing with very specific duties as laid out in RCW, whatever. I have just some concerns about those being only in the handbook, which does not have council oversight, but administrative oversight. At least that's my understanding of how the handbook works because I don't believe. Correct, if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that we approved it as a council. We just said, thanks for sharing the plan administration. So I'm, I am worried about that authority strictly being in the hands specifically for what counts as a quorum for the planning commission and. The process for removal being solely in the hands of the administration. So I want to make sure that that was, that my understanding was correct about that situation and that that's what we really want to do. And just to clarify, it's not this administration specifically that I am concerned about. It is the general principle. I'm definitely not trying to attack this administration at all and my concerns around that.
So quorum is is the same for all advisory bodies, right? There's a quorum when there's a majority of the of the advisory board present, so.
But it's only the handbook and the administration could change the handbook without the council acting. That was my concern.
But then also the removal, I mean, there's statutes that we can't remove unless there's a hearing or whatever. So we're following the statutes.
Okay, that helps on that. So then there's just a point issue. Thanks.
Councilor Watson?
Thank you. To the point of the quorum, I think that's already covered by Robert's Rules of Order. And it's just consistent that it's always fifty percent plus one. Whether it's in our ordinance or whether it's in the handbook, it still goes back to Robert's Rules of Order, if I'm correct.
City attorney, Lynn, Lynn Anne?
So because your planning commission operates under the OPMA, OPMA defines what constitutes a quorum. So again, it's not something that's really subject to the council changing. It's what state law requires, so.
Your approach, Malaway?
Well, and kind of addressing your point, it's not subject to council change nor administration change. So it is required by RCW. We both have responsibilities to adhere to the RCW's as stated. Whether it's administratively in handbook or in our code.
Councilor Johnson?
Well, thank you for addressing my concerns. I am a happy camper.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? See then, move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posnay? And the motion passes. And the ordinance twelve eighty seven is approved. Next item is AB twenty four dash zero one five, the misuse of the nine eleven response system. This is the first reading of ordinance twelve ninety. Councilor Watson, would you please read the introduction?
Thank you, mayor. This proposed ordinance is intended to reduce the number of false requests for emergency services or misuse of the nine one one. Emergency response system, which occurs within the city of Snoqualmie, threatening public and officer safety. And resulting in the waste of city resources, this ordinance would hold violators criminally responsible for their actions. With that, this is the first reading of ordinance twelve ninety of the misuse of the nine one one response system. And Chief Lynch is here to tell us more about this. Thank you.
So first of all, is there any public comment regarding this item?
Thank you.
See then? Chief Lynch, would you please present this? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me again. So I've come before you tonight to talk about our nine one one system, who we contract with, how it works, and the abuse that we're seeing for that system. And hopefully that this ordinance will address. You go to the next slide, please. So I'll give you the background on on the number of calls that our nine one one system or dispatch center takes. And I believe you have the, it's a little bit easier to read on the papers that are handed out. So we contract with the city of Issaquah nine one one dispatch center. Last year, twenty twenty three, that dispatch center handled fifty five thousand seven hundred and seven calls of some sort. That's all put together. Non-emergency. Outgoing calls that the dispatchers are making and emergency nine one one calls altogether. And it's broken down on the bottom part of this graph to show of that fifty five thousand seven hundred and seven, there were a total of twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty nine nine one one calls. And now that's for all three cities, North Bend, Snoqualmie, and Issaquah. Because those are the the police departments that that dispatch center dispatches for. And you can.
Lynch?
Councilor Vincent?
Preston or any of the places in between Fall City, that those those are different. Okay.
Yeah, that goes to King County. You can see on the bottom of the graph, the Snoqualmie incoming calls. And that is your non-emergency line, our dedicated Snoqualmie non-emergency line that goes to that dispatch center. Six thousand nine hundred and ninety six calls were handled and the dispatchers made five hundred and sixty four calls on our behalf. So quite a bit less than the city of Issaquah. But still, six thousand nine hundred and ninety six calls is is no short number there.
Councilor Washington?
Yeah, thank you, chief. I'm just curious to still, can you hear me? The Snoqualmie outgoing call is five hundred and sixty four. Is that simply just a, someone may call in from a number and hang up and they have to call that person back? Or what what would?
No, it would be. It would be us asking the dispatchers to contact another department to confirm a warrant.
Okay.
Could be us calling for a tow truck and the dispatcher has to make those calls. So that's what that would be.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And the numbers are not divided between North Bend and Snoqualmie. It's all, those are all both cities put together.
All three locations, okay.
Wait, Councilor Watson?
Thank you. Would it be possible to blow that screen up so that those that are sitting in the audience could actually see these numbers? Because they're pretty significant. There, it's a little bit better.
So fifty five thousand seven hundred and seven phone calls of some sort in one year. And of those, the non-emergency line dedicated for Snoqualmie was six thousand nine hundred and ninety six calls that they received. Now, there's standards for nine one one answering times and the. The standard for King County is to have nine one one calls answered in less than ten seconds. And that would be. That ninety five percent or ninety percent of the all calls are under ten seconds that they're answered. You can go to the next slide.
There we go.
So you can see that of the twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty seven nine one one calls, only four hundred and eighteen were over ten seconds. And they further break it down. Into over twenty seconds. So their goal is ninety five percent of all nine one one calls should be answered within twenty seconds. There were twenty one calls last year that went over twenty seconds. You have to remember that the dispatch center, the room, you could fit probably eight or nine of them in this room. So at any one time, there's a minimum of two dispatchers in there and they're handling the police department radios for three different cities. And the phone calls that are coming in for those three different cities. So time is of an essence when you're looking at twelve thousand eight hundred some odd nine one one calls in a year. Their resources are limited. We go to the next slide. To put this into a real life scenario. We've we've pulled numbers for one LIFIC caller that we have. And it was broken down into twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. The non-emergency and emergency calls to nine one one were put together for this one particular caller. And in twenty twenty three, that caller made one hundred and nineteen calls. The majority of them, until recently, have been to the the non-emergency line. That goes to the same dispatch center with only majority of the time two dispatchers working. We have seen an uptick, though, in twenty twenty four, and this is in the first three months of the year. This particular caller has called a hundred and forty nine times. Just in the first three months. Now, the disparagey disparity in the in the number from last year to this year. In the middle of the summer, we started seeing an influx of calls. And I asked the dispatch center that every time that this person calls, that they're not just making one incident. And supplementing that there's another call, there's another call. I wanted to be able to pull the data. And I asked them to, every time that this person calls, that they make a incident and it has to be put through to the sergeant that's on duty. And depending on what this person is requesting, whether there will be a response. And so that was, we lost data for the first half of last year. I think in twenty twenty four, the first three months, that's probably a fairly. Close representation of what that caller is doing to the nine one one system and the non-emergency line. So in comparison, most people don't have to call the non-emergency line ten times in a year. It's just the way that it is. You know, I never have to call. It's just the way that it is. You know, I never have to call a non-emergency line. I've never had to call the nine one one line in the last few years either. But I tried to put it in perspective. So if somebody actually called the non-emergency line ten times in one year, that that would account for point one four percent of all the phone calls that were taken by the nine one one dispatch center. And then I mentioned at the bottom there, the note that they're putting in calls that are coded with a C I T nature code. It's a crisis intervention. And it is reviewed by the the on-duty supervisor. If there's nothing new to report, if they're not making threats, then there's no real response. We have to make the decision not to go. These are happening so often that, you know, we just, we can't afford to go to every one of these calls. Slide, please. So the non-emergency calls. The last year, they received six thousand nine hundred and ninety-six calls. And if we take that number and we whittle it down to the first three months to say that, you know, for the year, it's going to be the same amount. It's equivalent to five hundred and eighty-three calls per month or nineteen calls per day that they're dealing with. And using the figures above, it's estimated that dispatch has received one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine calls to the Snoqualmie non-emergency line in the first three months of the year. During that time, this one specific person has called a hundred and forty-nine times, which accounts for eight point five percent of all the calls on the non-emergency line coming to the dispatch center. So the emergency calls, the nine one one calls, dispatches received twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine calls last year for all three cities combined. It's equivalent of one thousand seventy-four per month or thirty-six nine one one calls per day on average. So in addition to the issue that we've been living with now with this one particular caller calling the seven-digit line, non-emergency line, and going to the dispatch center or calling our phone tree and hitting seven to be sent down to the dispatch center. It says, press this to talk to a dispatcher. This particular caller in one day, in March, dialed nine one one nine time in nineteen minutes. And it was not to report an emergency. It was not to report anything new. It was the ongoing harassment of the police department. And it's tying up the nine one one line. It not only tied up our Issaquah nine one one line, but all nine calls were sent to a cell phone tower that routed to the King County Dispatch Center. So we took up a call receiver for the initial answering of the call. And then the time it took to transfer that call to the Issaquah Dispatch Center. And then using the numbers above, we can figure out that on that day, this one caller called twenty-five percent of dispatch's average daily nine one one call. So we've identified the problem. We've identified the problem. And we first go to R C W to see if there's any kind of remedy that we can employ. And you can see the two R C Ws that deal with possible misuse of the nine one one emergency system. First is false reporting, but you can see on there that it's very specific language about what the person has to do to have violated this R C W. They have to report a emergency and expect a an emergency response by police or fire. And then it comes up that it was a false report. So it doesn't really fit what we need it to do. The second one, telephone harassment, you know. By definition, that's what it is. However, the language in R C W states that to be guilty of telephone harassment, you need to make these repeated calls harassing a particular person. So when we have repeated calls coming into the nine one one center, it's not harassing one particular person. They don't know who's going to answer the phone. So that it's an equal opportunity of harassment in the one center. So it comes up that we really can't enforce any R C Ws to stop this behavior. So next slide. I'm proposing that we pass a new ordinance that would make the misuse of the emergency nine one one response system a misdemeanor.
Councilor Washington.
Thank you, Chief. And I just want to make sure that I'm I'm hearing you correctly. So since they're calling into the call center and they're getting different people, it's not a harassment of a single person. So these two R C Ws aren't applicable. Is that what I hear you saying? Okay. Thank you.
Or is it they're not naming the same person at the police department, they're, that person's picking on other people, the police department as well?
Yeah, there's, I mean, the, I listen to all these calls when they come in. And we store those those calls on the non-emergency and the nine one one line. And they are all of the same nature. They are not reporting anything new. They are very vulgar and respectful to the dispatchers. But they're all the same call. They're all the same wanting to get information that has already been provided. There's nothing new that this caller is bringing to support a new investigation or to open up a case. It's it's just nothing new. So in writing this city ordinance, though, I think we have addressed the behavior that needs to stop. Because in this ordinance, it's going to hold somebody accountable for for calling nine one one numerous times within nineteen minutes and using that non-emergency line to request to go directly to the dispatch center when they call our phone tree at the station or dialing the seven-digit line that rings there in the dispatch center. As an outcome for this this behavior, it is, in my opinion, a threat to community safety. You can go a couple of slides there to the end. I'm sorry, I went over the mandated five-slide rule, so. So this is a little bit more. So at any one time, the the dispatch center staff by minimum of two. And sometimes we have three. If we're really lucky and the schedules overlap, we would have four for a couple hours while somebody is prepared to go home. But most of the time, two. They, like everybody else, they're they're short-staffed and they can only stack with two. But we look at the two police departments, the Snoqualmie Police Department and the Issaquah Police Department. They're covering three different cities, totaling nearly sixty-one thousand citizens. And when a dispatcher is hung up on a repeat call that's would be in violation of this ordinance, it is a danger to the police officers. The only link that a police officer has to outside help is on the other end of that radio. Something is happening and they need help quickly. They don't have time to call a seven-digit line, call the dispatch center. They pick up the radio and we have to have somebody answer. That is, that's the bare minimum, you know, to keep our officers safe. And it would have an out impact of those twenty-one calls last year that went over twenty seconds to to answer when the nine one one calls come again. And it would, like, the nine calls in nineteen minutes early in March, it affects not only our dispatch center, but an additional dispatch center that's handling those calls. So I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, I I really appreciate your time and consideration on this. So that's the end of my presentation.
Councilor, Councilor Rodden.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief Lynch. This is deeply concerning. And, you know, besides the the risk to community safety, is there a potential cost to us in having a dispatch center that's that's overburdened? Is there a cost per call or or future contracts where it might potentially end up costing us more?
It definitely has that potential, but right now, we are under contract with the Issaquah Police Department to use their dispatch center. And it's a flat fee. So if we doubled our calls in the next couple of years, it would not affect how many, how much dollars we're paying on that. I could tell you that the frustration level for that agency is reaching a boiling point. And they have reached out for help. They're begging me to push this forward and with the help of of the council to get something done that can curb this behavior.
Councilor Benson.
Does Issaquah have an ordinance like this?
They do not, but they are sitting back and watching us. Because there's numerous departments that have that have impacted these ordinances. There's counties in the state of Washington that have. The language that's in this particular ordinance is a Frankenstein of a bunch of different ordinances. I took what we needed and the exact language out of these these ordinances that have already been passed and have already been used to come up with something that fit the needs of the citizens of Snoqualmie. They're looking at at doing the same thing. And there there's hardly any department that is without their problem callers. And there, it is everywhere. So I see a trend that it's going to bring other ordinances to King County. And the more that it happens, there's, there's a couple of departments in the South End that already have misuse of the nine one one system ordinances. A lot of the counties over in Eastern Washington already have it.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, two things. First is if Issaquah enacted a policy like this one, would that apply to the caller from outside Issaquah Police Department's realm? In other words, would it apply to to this caller?
Yeah, so in most state laws that are passed and city ordinances that are passed, they're set up to be the jurisdiction of where the the violation occurred. And this one would put it to be where the caller is actually calling from. We would have the jurisdiction to to hold somebody accountable for that. There are exceptions. You know, there's, we have policies about missing persons that even if it's not ours and a department is refusing to take a missing person report, we do that and we take the investigation. Frauds are a little bit different as well. It's, it can be where the victim is or where the where the suspect did the fraud from. For the most part, we've set this ordinance up like the majority of state law and other ordinances where the jurisdiction would be from where the caller was calling from.
We had Councilor Benson and then Martin.
Thanks. And then I'll have another question. We can go through the other council members. So quick follow-up on that. So the answer is, it it sounds like what the answer was is that Issaquah could pass something like this that would apply to this caller. But this ordinance as written, if a doctrine Issaquah would not.
No, so they would handle any callers that was calling from Issaquah. If they were doing, their ordinance would have to cover their city.
Councilor Benson and Councilor Rodden.
Do you, do you think it's, is is it the best strategy to do an overly specific ordinance? Or do we need a more general ordinance about misuse of the nine nine one one? Do you see, do you foresee any, any, you know, passing a law for one person is not a good idea. Right? Creating a policy that that addresses a problem that could be, that could go to scale.
We added three different sections of this and we're very specific on what a violation would would look like. We feel that those three different sections of this ordinance would cover any kind of problem that we have in the future.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to come back and make an adjustment.
Thank you.
Councilor Rodden.
Chief, could we go back two slides to penalties? That's probably the most important one. What are the consequences?
So it it would be set at a misdemeanor level, which means that they could be fined up to a thousand dollars by the court and or held on ninety days in jail if found guilty of this crime. Like, everybody knows, it's hard to go to jail in King County. And it'd be hard to go to jail on this unless it's a routine offender. We are going to do our best, if this is passed, to do a educational period for the citizens of Snoqualmie and North Bend. I'm presenting this tomorrow night to the North Bend Public Safety Committee. And we're trying to mirror the ordinance here. And I think that, you know, the more that we get this out, the hope is that we never have to use it.
Thank you.
Your approach, Tim Hallway.
Again, I want to make sure that we're not, we need to take the long view and not address the particular instance today. So are these penalties in alignment with what you see in other jurisdictions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they're the lowest criminal penalty. So the misdemeanor is under the gross misdemeanor. And I have not found any misuse of the nine one one system at the gross misdemeanor level. They're all across the board misdemeanors.
Councilor Cotton.
I think we briefly touched on this at the Public Safety Committee meeting. But the imposition of fees, the five hundred dollars per incident. So that would be for each individual call.
It would be. And we we worked with city attorneys to see exactly what we could do as far as a, you know, administrative fees. And we found that the city of Snoqualmie cannot take the fees. Though primes are set up for the ability to people to be charged restitution for their actions. But the restitution has to go to the actual victim. And the victim in this would be the Issaquah Dispatch Center. And that was put in there to also help deter, you know, any kind of behavior moving forward once everybody knows about this.
Councilor Christensen.
Yeah, um, so I unfortunately, like, I I do think that it's disappointing that we're here and that, you know, this even has to be brought. That disappointment obviously has nothing to do with with what the police department has brought and what the Public Safety Committee put forward. It's just, it is really disappointing that we're in a situation where we have a resident who is calling and putting our police officers in danger and the general public too. If if folks are not able to reach anyone at nine one one, then it can put literally the the residents here and and our officers in in danger and that just cannot continue. I think that the one request that I would potentially have to ask is that as a condition precedent to this going forward and having someone charged is that we serve a notification on someone that basically what their actions have done could be a violation of this, so that we give that one additional warning so that we don't end up in a situation where other residents feel like they can't call nine one one or they're worried about a fine. So I think that if we considered adding just that one precaution, then we wouldn't have, at least I wouldn't have concerns about having a chilling effect. Because I don't want our residents to end up in a situation where they don't feel like they can call nine one one. But obviously, I think that the way that this is drafted, if someone looks at it, it's it's very clear. It's very straightforward. As long as you're acting in an appropriate way with nine one one services, you'll be fine.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, that was my second point was I just also had that same concern that, you know, someone hears a car alarm going off down the street, they go check it out. It's just going off. So annoying. And so they call nine one one. And not saying that any particular officer would do this, but the idea that they could just be slapped with this thousand dollar fine out of nowhere. It's like, oh, that's not great. It'd be nice if if they could be told, hey, just so you know, this qualifies for this. This great education. I know that that's exactly what the police usually do. I remember this came up a number of years ago when the city was, say again. It was trash. I remember when the city was considering helmets, requiring helmets citywide instead of just at parks, if I remember correctly. That's what it was. Anyway, yeah.
No, we had to fix it. It only required is required at citywide except for parks.
Is except for parks. Anyway, yeah. Point being that the question came up of, does this mean that the police are going to be constantly pulling kids over and giving them fines all over the place? That didn't seem quite right either. But the police assured, yeah, there's going to be a warning system. You know, we're not just going to be slapping fines on kids left and right. You know, give some education and stuff. So I I also see that that concern. And I think that just to make sure, especially because of how important this is, nine one one is the lifeline for so many people. I wouldn't want anyone feeling feeling like they should be afraid to call nine one one. No one should ever be afraid to call nine one one in the United States of America. I would feel much better if there was something in there to just make sure, just ensure that no one's going to get slapped with the fine because they got annoyed by someone's car alarm going off.
Speak to that?
Yes.
I totally understand where both council members are coming from on this. In state law and in Washington State, there are only a handful of mandatory arrest situations or mandatory booking situations. That being any domestic violence within four hours of it occurring. Or having to book DUIs that are have been multiple DUIs. The rest of the RCW allows for police departments and officers to use discretion. And I would caution about putting language into the ordinance demanding a a first warning. Because there are circumstances that, you know, what if a person dials nine one one fifty times in an hour? And it's some absorbent amount. And we actually have, God forbid, a fire going on. Or, you know, something else big. In in my opinion, we're going to go through a education period. And we're going to post on social media about this ordinance, what's appropriate, what's not. I don't believe that in the writing of this ordinance that it leads anyone to believe that normal nine one one calls or calls for for information or service, you know, to the the non emergency line would put you in violation of this. These this is going to be an extreme incident where this is ever used. I think that pushing forward with a a ordinance free of a mandated warning and letting the police department and the city put this out under a under a notification for the citizens and let them know that this has taken place. And we can go through a you know, the first thirty days, you know, we're not going to enforce it if that would make you feel better about this ordinance. But I think that there needs to be an education period. And I think that if the department ever takes action on this, it's going to be an extreme circumstance.
We had Councilor Vincent and then Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Um, one, one of the things that makes it so that I don't have that same concern about this is that it doesn't it doesn't address mistaken use of nine one one. It address it addresses repeated misuse. And it calls out harassment and rude, looter threatening language. It 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 talks about and it and it's and again, it's not I accidentally called nine one one when I really should have called the non emergency number in this situation. It it it's a it's it's speaking to deliberate misuse of nine one one, which is not the same thing as calling nine one one because there's a car alarm going off or something like, you know, which actually I don't know what the rule is on that. So I don't think I'd go to jail if I did. I wouldn't, but you know. So I don't have that same concern about the language of of this ordinance.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
So I think the last time we got into this conversation was basically uncontained trash blowing down the street. We passed an ordinance under which the police can actually go in and enforce cleanup of trash that you've lost control of blowing down the street. But if I were to go down the alley with my trash can and start throwing trash into other people's yards, they should have the discretion of we're stepping you right into the process. Having said that, it's not solely at the discretion of the police. Keep in mind, this then goes to a judge. I mean, if if the person if the person involved wants to have a discussion, they can take it to a judge to have the discussion and say, for whatever reason, you know, this is why I did it. I I don't think we should, I believe we've had at least one citizen call that their downspout was not correct. Prior chief. I don't think that individual is probably not appropriate nine one one, but I don't think they did it maliciously. And it's discretion of the police how to handle it from there. I believe the past chief informed her that was not within the purview of the police, but when you say no call's too small, you gotta expect some.
It is my belief that we need to handle things at the lowest possible level. And I don't foresee this being a first time arrest, like a stodious arrest and a booking into jail. This would most likely be a filed case through the court and they get a court date and they can come explain themselves. That's 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 the way that we're moving into this as an organization, the way we see this.
Councilor Christensen and then Councilor Johnson.
So again, I'm I just want to be very clear with everybody tonight. I have no concerns with the way that I think that the police department will handle this. I'm not worried about you guys, you know, jumping out and coming after residents. That's not been my experience at all at any point in time. So that is not where my concern is in any way, shape or form. My concern is just about it having a chilling effect, right? As the fact of the matter is that chances are not all of our residents are going to take the time to actually read the proposed ordinance. They're going to hear about it on social media. It'll be, you know, the game of telephone we're all used to seeing. And as it progresses further and further, it there's going to be less factually accurate information in there. And so my concern is more about making sure that we're still able to to go by the motto that there is no call too small. And I want to make sure that our residents, you know, however much time they have to look at this and and everything else, that that they are still comfortable calling when they feel like there's a dangerous situation. But again, that is not in any way, shape or form a concern about the police department.
Councilor Johnson.
I wonder if there's just one little thing that might alleviate my concern. On number two, it says makes an emergency call or calls. If it just said makes emergency calls, that counts as two.
Minimally. Uh, if we were
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
If we were a larger city, there's such thing as swatting. And one incident of that I believe would be enough to invoke this, if not other penalties. Swatting is where you make a nine one one call and you basically state to them some circumstances happening at a residence that would require a SWAT team response.
Well, that that's covered in RCW. This is different for number two.
Peace. But if you if you make us maybe not swatting may be inappropriate, but some level, I I believe there ought to be a discretion of the police of what the intent was, the level one should be enough if it is done truly maliciously.
They're egregious.
And egregious, then that should be discretion. I don't want to limit them to say they got to do two. And is it two per year or is it two per decade or when's the clock start?
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, for number two, it says for the purpose, other than to report a situation where the person believes requires prompt service. So it's a nuisance call under number two.
Councilor Cotton.
I think with, as Chief Lynch just described, a the education to our community. I don't believe this is going to have a chilling effect on, you know, the 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 use of appropriate nine one one calls or no call too small. I think that you've stated that very clearly is you're not not going to change business as usual. I have no qualms about this. I would even like to go so far as suggest that we make this the first reading of this ordinance at this meeting.
You mean you want to, are you motioning to waive second reading?
No, I'm not motioning to waive second reading. But but I want to make sure that we don't we have to to invoke and
This is the first, it was introduced at first reading.
Yeah, but we make the proposal and and second for this, or do we wait till the second reading?
The second reading is motion to, unless we waive second reading.
Yeah.
Second reading is when we make motion to adopt.
May thirteenth. Councilor Benson.
Yeah, Councilwoman Chris Councilwoman Christensen's concern is clearly heartfelt and I appreciate that. I think the argument that I would that I would that comes to my mind is that there is really good education on nine one one. And how to properly use it. We've been, we've had nine one one as the emergency phone number all our lives. And we've been, we've been taught how to properly use it. The person who violates this ordinance isn't, I don't think they're doing it because they're unaware. I don't think anybody's going to be capable of violating this ordinance because of lack of understanding about the proper use of nine one one. I don't know how many times you've dialed nine one one before. I think I've done it three times in my life. Because the 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 default setting, I think, for citizens is a respect for that service. So I I I I hear your concern and I worry about chilling people from from using a a service like that. I just don't imagine, because the the times that I have used nine one one, I knew, oh, I have to call nine one one right now. This is one of those times. And I think that's the experience that people have with nine one one. They don't call it all the time. They they hardly ever call it. But when they do need to call it, they're confident that they need to call it. And I think that describes high nineties percentage wise calls to nine one one. I don't know, you probably have better numbers on that, but I think the vast majority of people understand what nine one one is for and know when they're misusing it. I think the number of people that misuse nine one one because, you know, they want to talk about that terrible bid on Price is Right is and and they just need somebody to talk to about it. I think that's just a ridiculously low percentage of of people. And to Councilman Holloway's point, I think the judge figures that out and says, okay, let's let's not call that for, you know, anything below jeopardy.
Tell you that what I've found since I've been in Snoqualmie and in North Bend is that people, when they should be calling nine one one, they don't think it's that important and they will take time to look up the seven digit line. Or they call the police department. And in some cases, we come back in in the morning when nobody's been in there. And we will have a call on the voice recorder that they're reporting something that was in progress or should have been, you know, called nine one one. I spend a lot of time talking to community groups about it's okay to call nine one one. It goes to the same place. You don't have to wait and get the the seven digit line. You can just tell them non emergency and they'll if they're busy, they'll put you on hold. And so I've done a lot of education in almost two years here about that because you know, if you are an upstanding citizen, you don't want to tie up nine one one, you know, even when they have a right to. And that's what I see with the most here in the city.
So LT from the police department has his hand up. Do you want?
Wait, LT is going to voluntarily speak?
Thank you for, I I just wanted to contribute. There's a bunch of discussion about what the police will do and what this caller does. And I'd like to humanize and personalize the dispatchers that are in between. I spent fifteen years as a dispatcher at Issaquah and previous to that at two dispatch centers in Snoqualmie. And the dispatchers have, especially at Issaquah, a very close relationship with their officers, but they also have a a strong sense of duty and responsibility and caring for the members of the public. And Issaquah being a smaller center, there's a lot of pressure on the dispatchers there when there's only two. One of them is handling the radios and one of them is answering calls. But calls frequently will come in more than one at a time. They don't stack themselves neatly for you. And so there are times where you're at the police dispatcher and finding that you're having to answer the phone at the same time. So you have the officers in or you have the caller in your ear and you have the officers now coming out of a speaker. And there can be times when if an officer were to get into an altercation with someone, they don't come up on the radio and say, fighting with one, although ideally they would. What you just hear is a series of clicks as they're trying to get to their radio because they're struggling with someone. So you have to have an ear out to that type of thing. It can be that subtle and it can be that easily missed if you're tending to a a vitriolic caller on the line. And this particular caller has called at times when nothing is going on. And you and you might think that, oh, if nothing's going on, you can easily deal with the common caller. But there have been times where the area is restricted because there is an emergency in which case, like say, an occupied stolen vehicle. Tones go out on the air and they let all of the units know the only units that should be talking are the ones that are either on this incident or going to assist on this incident. And it's during those times also that this individual has called. And now as a dispatcher, not only are you dealing with an officer whose safety is threatened or the member of the public's safety is threatened, but you're dealing with this person who's calling for no for without good reason and is putting an already stressful job, an already stressful time and and just amping it up.
Thank you.
We didn't ask him up sooner.
Have any other questions or discussion? We do have the second reading, May thirteenth, so you can take this back and do it, think about it and come forward with additional questions. Councilor Martin.
And just as a a point to that very item, we have a public safety meeting between now and the second reading. So if you have concerns as a citizen, you can come to the public safety meeting and 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 give your perspective. Also, for the council members too, that's an opportunity if you have questions for the chief to direct those to him so that he can respond accordingly.
Thank you, Chief Lynch. Okay, so public safety, is there any report for Public Safety Committee?
I think that's a wrap.
Maybe for twenty four dash zero four zero Traffic Impact Fee Program Development. Councilor Washington, would you please read the introduction motion?
Introduction. A traffic impact fee program to capture a fair and proportionate share of the cost of new transportation facilities needed to serve new growth and development within the city of Snoqualmie. And proposed action to move move to approve the development of a transportation impact fee program for the city of Snoqualmie, including the identification of a consultant to conduct a rate study and for staff to prepare draft amendments to the municipal code to establish the program.
Is there a second? Been moved by Councilor Washington, second my Councilor Johnson for a basically Traffic Impact Fee Program Development. And we have our, was there any public comment regarding this item? And then we have our Community Development Director, Emily Artecha, who will cover this, review this item.
Um, yes, tonight we have Chris Brayland from Farr and Pierce Online to provide a very brief overview of this agenda bill. Chris, are you there?
Yes, I am here. I do need, oh, sorry, there we go, screen sharing. I will start when you're ready, Emily.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, very good. Thank you, council members. As Director Arche S A said, I'm going to provide just a quick overview of the potential transportation finance source. I was also listening to the the direction of the Finance Director earlier, so this dovetails a little bit into what was discussed. We also presented this to the Community Development Committee of the Council. So if there I, this is intentionally brief and if there's questions, we're happy to answer those. So we want to discuss the idea of transportation impact fees for the city of Snoqualmie. Just a bit of background of what these are. It's a finance source that's an Just a bit of background of what these are. It's a finance source that's an integral part of the state's. Growth Management Act, which asks cities and counties to be able to invest in infrastructure. Concurrently with new growth in the community. And as part of that, the Growth Management Act enabled. These communities that planning under that act to introduce this financing mechanism back in the nineteen nineties. To be clear, it's a one-time assessment on a new development or a change of use of a development. That increases the amount of trips that are added to the community's transportation system. So. Get assessed typically at the time of either billing permit approval or the certificate of occupancy. The funding from this impact fee program has to go towards new transportation capacity. In other words. New infrastructure to support that new growth. It can't be used for things like maintenance or preservation of existing facilities. Since once something is built, that's the responsibility of the city to maintain and not the developer to fund any of that maintenance. The impact fees can only be spent on a specifically defined multimodal project list. So this can include. Anything that facilitates transportation in the city, but it's a clear list developed by, you know, the Public Works. Or the Community Development Department. That's typically. Associated with the Transportation Improvement Program. And so it's not, can't be used to fund anything. It does have to be off that list. And it's really clear in state law that this has to be part of a larger funding strategy. In other words, this helps to enable use of other funds, things like grants or other city funds. Transportation impact fees cannot be the sole source of funding for the city's development of infrastructure because the idea is that. While you're sharing the cost burden with development, developers cannot be the sole source of all new infrastructure in the city. That's a very intent of the state law. Impact fees are not new to the region. In fact, Snoqualmie is a bit unusual in that you do not have impact fees. It's just a quick list of the, the communities that are surrounding you that have impact fees. Most of these fee programs have been in existence. For quite a while. So developers, architects are very familiar with these types of fees. And generally expect that they be in place and in some cases help to reduce the amount of uncertainty. Of what they need to be paying to reduce their transportation impacts on the system when they come in and develop. A little note on the fees that are around those surrounding jurisdictions, the statewide average. As of last year was around fifty five hundred dollars or so. Most of the impact fees in King County are above that number just because it's more expensive to develop transportation projects in King County. And those in East King County tend to be a little bit higher as well. In fact, some of the highest in the state. Some of which has to do with the fact that development has been occurring in areas that are just harder to build. Out infrastructure. So this is just to point out that these fees are not unfamiliar. Towards developers in any of the communities that are around you and are used for funding. Transportation infrastructure throughout the region. So last slide here, what do you need to do to enact these fees? That's kind of why we're here tonight. Need a confirmed transportation project list as part of your transportation improvement program that's pretty much in place. From the work that the Public Works Department and Community Development have been doing. There might be some changes that might be proposed as part of this if there, if a fee were to be implemented. But that's, most of the work is already done in that regard. An impact fee rate study is required. This is a technical study that, that is needed to meet state's. Law and also case law. That would be something that this is, this, this. Work that is being requested for action would be seeking to move forward on. And once that rate study is done, you need an enabling ordinance to be able to charge the fee. That is put into the municipal code. So with that, that is our brief presentation and I will turn it back to. The council chair and the mayor and the director if there's anything else. Thank you.
Councilor, do you have any questions? Councilor Johnson?
I just want to point out that the red arrows are very helpful showing some cities. There are other ones right at the top that. I'm not exactly sure why they weren't called out too. Renton, that's number three. That's, you know, southeasternly. Kirkland is another one that's relatively high up the list. So at any rate, just point being that, yeah, we're kind of the odd ones out. Most wondering, what other cities don't? Maple Valley is there?
Councilor Walton?
I have two questions. First of all, is there a difference in these jurisdictions between residential and commercial? I assume that there is because the traffic impact would be different on each. And secondly, is. Having the impact fee is the first step in determining where we might land in. The assessment of the impact fee we end up proposing to charge.
Yeah, good, good questions. I, I will start the response, but Chris, feel free to jump in. Yeah, there is not necessarily a stark, a stark or big difference between, you know, retail and residential or commercial and residential. You look at Sammish, for example, it's a bedroom community. It has two very small shopping centers at QFC and a Safeway, and that's all they get. You know, they, 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 they were a bedroom community to begin with, but the first thing they did was implement the traffic impact fee. So you don't have to have a lot of commercial retail to do it. Your second question. Yes, it, it depends on the rate study. So, and the rate study is, if you recall, directly tied back to the TIP. The Transportation Improvement Plan. There's a list on there. Need to know what the dollar amount totals up to on that list in order to help determine what the rate study would ultimately come back with. Information.
City Attorney Lynn Anne?
Councilor Walton, just to kind of follow up on your first question about the difference between commercial and residential. The, what the rate study does is it establishes a per trip rate. So regardless of whether, so, so you're, the, the rate study incorporates trip generation estimates. Based on nationwide transportation studies. So what happens when you have a development project come in as you, you. You look at what type of project it is, that tells you the trip generation average for that type of. Use, whether it's a residential, single family, multifamily, retail, office building, whatever it is. They'll, they'll all have different trip generation rates. So you would apply that rate times the per trip. Cost so that the cost per trip is, is the same. It's a trip is a trip. It's just that those different, you know, residences will generate a different number of trips. Than a grocery store.
Councilor Walton?
Follow up to that. We went through that exercise ad hoc, if you will. Through the mill site development in calculating the number of trips based on the potential usage. There, is that correct?
So if I may, I wasn't a participant in that process. However. In the absence of a transportation impact fee program, cities can rely on SEPA. The Environmental Protection Act, State Environmental Policy Act to. Determine a transportation impact on a development by development basis. The purpose of an, of a, one of the key benefits of a transportation impact fee program is it kind of establishes a pay as you go, one size fits all number. And so you just wind up counting trips based on these averages. And so it's, it's a less tailored. But it's a more predictable number. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Holloway?
So just keep in mind, it's almost nine thirty tonight and this is just to go develop the program. And come back with what those impact fees, so these detailed questions may be more appropriate at that time. This is just, do we, the council, want the department to go out? And create an impact fee program, come back with us with options and discussions. I think we can say yes. We can always say no later. We can say yes now.
Council, any other questions? Seeing them, all is a favor, say aye. Any opposed name? Okay, so passes. So for a traffic impact fee program development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excited? Oh, anything else for community development? Same, Chair Washington, anything else?
No, not at this time. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, Parks Public Works. AB twenty four dash zero four nine Comprehensive Plan Capital Facilities and Utilities Element. Councilor Washington, would you please read the introduction and motion?
That's, we're moving that under the.
Oh, that's right. It's Senator Parks Public Works. I just need to call the chair. That's, Councilor Benson.
Uh, yeah, the capital facilities, utilities element was the fourth of six comprehensive plan elements to be reviewed by the city council. As part of the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review Update twenty forty four. The council has expressed a desire to acknowledge the draft work completed to, to date as part of an ongoing review process. Move to accept the council roundtable edits on the capital facilities and utilities element goal and policies shown in exhibit one. As part of an ongoing review of the city comprehensive plan periodic review update twenty forty four. Subject to integration and harmonization with other comprehensive plan elements under review.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Benson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none? Is there any discussion? Seeing none? So this was reviewed during March twenty fifth and April, and April eighth roundtable meetings. So. Moving on to vote, all is a favor, say aye. Any opposed name? And unanimous, we passes. Congratulations. Anything else for Parks and Public Works?
It looks like there is also AB twenty four dash oh four six. Task Order Thirty Eight Amendment with the Northwest Hydraulic Consultants for Sandy Cove Bank Stabilization.
Be the motion, introduction, motion, Councilor.
Bring that up, sorry. The preliminary design and permitting for, permitting budget for the Sandy Cove Riverbank stabilization project is nearly expended. This agenda bill provides for the final design bid support and construction management for the remaining project. Move to approve the amendments one point two and one point three with Northwest Hydraulic Consultants Task Order Thirty Eight. Sandy Cove Bank Stabilization and authorize merit assignment.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Vincent, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Sorry, excuse me, public comment? Seeing none? Okay, any discussion? So let's try to start the chair, Councilor Vincent.
No, 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 please, I, I was going to ask Councilman Holloway to speak to this one.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
While the analysis of the analysis mentioned, the budget session is deficient to the point that. With the approval of this amendment to the project, there will be insufficient budget to complete this project based upon current estimates. Acknowledge that estimates are seldom make shape in reality as we get through those things. The difference here is significant. Okay, I want us just wide open, eyes open when we go into this. That the budget doesn't close at the moment. Having said that. This amendment is a step in reducing project cost uncertainty and provides opportunities for value engineering. And optimization for costs. So. While, but it also does not commit the council for the full project costs. If things don't work out right. Having said that, I do recommend that we move forward with the, with the amendment. In hopes of getting a tighter reign on, tighter understanding of the costs and opportunity to maybe control some of that cost.
We do have our CIP manager Dylan Gamble here. If you have any questions for him. Councilor Benson?
I was hoping that Dylan would come up, yeah. When, when last we talked about the funding of this, you had some. Some points that you, that you were making that I thought were valuable as well.
Yeah, so we are aware of the shortfall as called out at the bottom of the budget section. And I have seen this coming for a bit and have been trying to hone in. In several directions to try to figure out how to make the project viable or cost affordable. And still achieve all the goals and efforts that we've been working towards for the last several years. Part of my mission between, assuming that this contract passes, is to continue working with the consultant to identify ways that we can. Reduce the cost of the construction phase and find opportunities in the remaining. Stormwater utilities. Find opportunities to reduce those costs in the rest of the stormwater utility to find backfill revenue. But I am mostly prioritizing how we can bring the cost of construction down, specifically looking at. How, how much contingency the engineers estimate really put into this number? How much they're including some of the fill that we've really already done in phase one, but they're being conservative with their numbers now. Given the stage that we are at in our cost estimating. They're, just to kind of speak quickly, they give us a cost estimate with a contingency, which is really a, a guess at how. How confident they are about these numbers. This is a pretty high contingency they included in this number. It means they really don't know yet because we saw some things that are outstanding that need to be identified first. So it's between now and then that we can kind of really drive down and find the opportunities in this. Again, without losing sight of the mission.
Councilor Benson?
And you're confident that any adjustments in those numbers will only go down?
No, uh, there's always risk, especially with a project like this. But it's a lot of things that I'm going to be working through. So some things might go up and some costs might be realized lower. But there's so many variables that I, it will be both and I will be seeking to bring the whole pile down. But I am certain that there will be a combination.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed name? And the Northwest Hydraulic Consultants Contract, a minute passes, Councilor Johnson?
Point of privilege, there's some beeping noise. I don't know what that is, but it's distracting. Whoever could turn it off, that'd be kind of nice.
Okay, next item is. Anything else for Parks Public Works?
Nothing further.
Okay, so F and A, AB twenty four dash zero five zero Appointment of Committees for Prop Number One. Public Safety Sales Tax. Your approach, Tim Halli, would you please read the introduction?
RCW twenty nine A dot three two dot two eight O requires legislative authority for the local government to formally appoint members to committees. To prepare arguments advocating approval or rejection of any proposed ballot measure. A motion to approve provides for appointment of persons to committees advocating for approval or rejection. Of the ballot measure authorized by Resolution Number One Six Seven. And actually, I believe that or should be an and. It will be a, a approval of both committees. Motion to approve the adoption of persons to committees to repair arguments advocating the approval and rejection of Proposition One. Public Safety Sales Tax and election to be held August sixth, twenty twenty four. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing any? So we have Finance Director Drew Butte.
Chair?
Your friend, Tim Halli?
Considering it's nine thirty and I think we're all agreed that, we agreed to put this on the ballot, we ought to agree to have the committees put together. I think we can forego discussion and move into a vote. I love you, Drew, but it's getting late.
Saw that man crush.
You put me in the man crush category, but.
Councilor Benson?
I, I wanted to hear this.
Okay. I withdraw.
Yeah.
Well, so just really simple, we created this vessel, right? The agenda bill to go forward in front of the F and A committee. We have now a chat exhibit.
We have now a chat exhibit two. We had a news release go out last week. We received five responses back, basically, five applications to serve as a part of either a pro or con committee. Four of the five applications requested to serve on the pro committee. One application requested to serve on the con committee. As a part of, as a consequence of that, we've added exhibit number two to your packet overall that shares the names of those people. In essence, the form that we have to fill out for King County only has three available slots for either committee itself, and so consequently, three people will be serving on the, or listed on the pro and con committee appointment form for the pro committee. And we've also invited that other person to work with the committee, but they will not be listed on the pro and con committee appointment form itself. And so with that said, we have exhibit two presented to you overall. Two of the people that are willing to participate as part of this process serve on the Civil Service Commission. In addition to that, we also have another person that has experience within public safety itself participating as a part of this conversation overall. So with that said, with proper backed council, exhibit number two gives you the names of those people who are prepared to serve on behalf of the city overall.
I am not finding.
Council Johnson.
Our city is blessed with two Brian Holloways. Is one of them in the room or?
No, that would be separate.
Okay, it's a different Brian.
No, I am not participating.
Just wanted clarity.
Different spelling of the Brian, too.
That's what I thought.
He's the better looking one.
Any other questions or? Councilwoman Biden.
I've been on a previous committee similar to this. And, and my question is, perhaps best from the legal council, would there be some benefit of going out and seeking additional con? Con perspectives to this? And I, I would think that we may have those individuals known to give them the opportunity. Or should we not?
Well, it's from a legal perspective, there's, there's no real difference. It's, if, if you, the council believes there should be additional people and the council is aware of someone who is likely on the con side and is willing to serve, then you're certainly able to approach them about service. But, you know, a committee of one is acceptable, so.
Yeah, comments or questions?
I just mentioned for everyone's benefit that the pro and con committee appointments are due May the third.
Yeah. And we do not have another council meeting between now and then. Are ready to vote on this list? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Okay, it passes unanimously. The next item is Biennial Budget Development Calendar. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
The twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget development calendar provides a timeline of expected city council meetings, workshops, and milestones for the upcoming biennial budget development process. Calendar includes elements relevant, relevant to the adoption of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget, such as a public safety tax proposition, the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty Capital Improvement Plan Utility Rate Study. Move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget development calendar. Have a second.
Moved by Mayor Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Christensen. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing them? Council, any discussion? We have our Finance Director Drew Bute, be happy to walk through it if you want. This has been reviewed at FNA, and changes are made based on input.
And we may, this is not concrete. We may make changes as we go through the process and things go on. But this, this is a lot of work we got to go through and account, and calendar in which we can do it.
Yes, Council Johnson.
I just wanted to remember, the date that it is supposed to be adopted by is technically December thirty-first, is that correct? Yes, okay, so the October third isn't particularly significant for any particular reason, correct? Just wishful, hopeful.
We are hoping to go through this as quickly as we possibly can. Obviously, that may or may not happen, but that is in our intention and our goal. On as part of that as well, we've added exhibit number two, which is the statutory deadlines by, through the RCW as well for preparing budgets this year and our calendar, all those dates. So with that said, yes, our intention is to have this adopted October the third.
It allows other work go on, such as we, the ERP payroll. We've, we've changed the deadline to January first so that we're not finishing up the budget and payroll on a, early October. So it gives us additional time to work on other projects as well.
We usually clip right through this stuff and.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing them, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you two vote? Council, Washington, Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Aye.
Any opposed name? So the budget calendar passes. Next item was community, the whole public comment discussion, Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Okay, so as we said, several weeks ago, we had Beavis and Butthead join us. And we want to prevent that in the future. Sorry, showing my age with reference. And kind of discussion after days focuses around that we pull back at this stage that online public comment is through email. They can submit an email to us or to city clerk, and we'll, as appropriate, include it in the record. But that we forego Zoom public comment. We did discuss, some organizations have done pre-registration, but felt that was kind of an undue burden on staff at this time to require that for participation in public online. Having said that, anybody who wants to come talk to council can come here in person and talk to us. And they don't have to wait for a council meeting to send us an email. They could send it whenever they want. All right, so I think unfortunately it does restrict public comment a little bit, but it kind of the sign of the times.
Councilwoman Washington.
Are you thinking in perpetuity, council member Holloway, or just temporary?
Well, most of our actions are are permanently until changed. As we go through, I want to kick us into review of rules and procedures. And we'll probably instantiate that into the rules and procedures in perpetuity until changed.
And did you already say council committees? So it would be kind of across the board, council meetings, council committees. And right now, we, we don't have commissions have online comments anymore, so. Further discussion? All is in favor.
We'll move forward with agenda bill and bring it back.
Look, we just do a motion and it'd be motion written into our minutes.
Move to suspend online public comments except through emails moving forward.
Second.
Appropriate?
I'm sorry?
The motion finds instead of a gender.
Yes.
Okay, so it was moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Walton to suspend online public comment moving forward.
Except by email.
Except by email. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Right. Public comment change has passed. So quickly, I'll do quick mayor's reports. So the city staff, we have Robert Angressano, who's a volunteer fire in the fire department. He actually held a workshop for all city employees on opioid education and overdose reversal training. And everyone attending actually got doses of Narcan. And he also provides this, this training at our fire station for our community. So it's out there listed, if anyone wants to attend, it's, it's pretty important to attend. Surprising statistics, and it is free. Councilwoman Christensen.
I've attended in the past, and I personally thought it was very helpful. Because there's a lot of stuff out there that you would not know otherwise.
Right. If you've gone by a community park, you would have noticed there's some big crates sitting there. And one says bear on the outside of it, so we know there's could be a bear inside of it. This actually is for the spray park. So it's going to be very, very cute. And so they were, they've started it and will have completion by the time it is nice and warm and to be able to use it, so. Bear has not escaped. Because your Councilwoman Walton and I went, attended a listening session with Wash Dot. And there were quite a few mirrors and council members from at least eight other cities that attended. And there's some major projects that are coming up, I ninety and other state highways such as State Route two oh two, State Route nine hundred, zero one sixty-one, a variety for the fish passage projects. And so we've had a lot, had a lot of discussion. And we requested, you know, coordination of closer closures, communication to cities. And also, you know, communication enclosures around events such as we have Boeing Classic would be a large one that will happen this summer, plus other events. And so we'd be able to feed them what our events are, and so hopefully not shut down good portions of ninety during those weekends. They've also are planning already for the FIFA World Cup events in twenty twenty-six. And so they have a plan of when and what they would be shutting down. So we'll keep in close contact with them, all the different mirrors and all the different cities, so. That along with State Route eighteen, it could be, it could be an issue. So they're going to work closely with this on it. I think you've already heard about Harbor Day event coming up on Saturday. And the grand opening is continuing fields on Closer Park this Friday. So it's going to be pretty special, having a lot of people attend and a lot of people just eager to play. So with that, we have any commission, community layers on reports? I mean, respective time. You probably want to get on to our executive sessions. So should we expand, extend our council meeting past ten PM? Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Walton, second by Councilwoman Washington, to go past, to pass ten PM. So one more second.
How long were we expecting there?
I will. One second. I think twelve, twenty minutes. Thirty minutes, total thirty minutes.
Okay.
So I will read it in executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero one one zero one AI to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation of, to the agency or governing body or a member acting in official capacity. Is or likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency lasting approximately thirty minutes. Those attending would include our interim city attorney, David Lenahan, city administrator, Mike Chambliss, Parks Public Works director, Jeff Hamlin. And that is it. So we take of, and no action is anticipated following conclusion of the executive session. So council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. The city clerk will be informed of the concluding time for the executive session, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. So it'll take a five-minute break and then thirty minutes. Is there a Christmas in? Should do what? Then we didn't, we. Didn't get it?
Promotion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We did. Okay, so we will reach.